All right. Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras, September 17th, 2020, Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you are able, will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Thank you. Supervisor Mills?
Good morning. I've got one. Angels Camp will be holding an Angels Night Out from 5:00 to 8:00 this Saturday. All of the stores downtown will be open and there will be, I believe, wine served in various locations for those that are interested.
Thank you very much. Other announcements from staff? Thank you. I'll just make a quick thank you to county staff, especially Tony, and other staff that worked last night on the Department of Insurance Town Hall. It was much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Alt, for providing that support. We'll move on to public comment.
General public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you very much. Everyone will have three minutes. Items not on the agenda, so would like to begin. Coach, Chief, are you standing up to give us public comment?
But I have to say it will be during your session regarding the homeless situation and risk.
That's not on today's agenda, so if you'd like to speak to it, this would be the time.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Don Young. I'm the Fire Chief for the San Andreas Fire Protection District and have been so for 25 We're currently dealing with a crisis in our county and I understand that homeless individuals and the now being advised that there's preparations being made to house individuals. And I'm very concerned. I have a very overburdened fire protection district. We respond to over 1,300 calls a year. My staff is underpaid. I've got young men and women that work for us for stipends, which is a penance to what most folks would get. And they move their way on up and out of the area as quick as they can because money is of an issue. We don't need something like that in Calaveras County. We don't even need it in San Andreas. I feel bad for it. I have a brother that lives in the same manner as most of these folks, so it's not as if I'm non-sympathetic towards their endeavors, but most of it is a choice that they make. And as it is right now, we get a number of calls that have to do with individuals that just have the inability to care for themselves. I wish I had more answers for you. I don't have a solution to the problem, but San Andreas, right now, with the income rate that's in our county, we're already impoverished. We don't need more in here. So unless you have some questions for me.
Thank you, Chief. The public comment? Will?
I'm Will Moore from Rancho Calaveras. And I have a homeless brother. Not in this area. He lives under some bushes out in the Delta. Anyhow, he was born blue. He was a blue baby. And somehow, in this birth process, something's missing inside. Can't see it. You know, I have a friend who was born with one finger on one hand and she has spent her whole life compensating for that missing hand. And this brother of mine has spent his whole life compensating for something that's missing. You can't say what it is. And there's no cure. I mean, I understand what the chief said, that he doesn't have any better alternatives. But somehow, society still has to deal with people who are missing parts. And I don't have any good suggestions to make either, but it isn't necessarily a choice. Yeah, there's a choice there, and alcohol plays a big part in it, so forth. But there's no cure for the situation anyhow. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's let the, I thought the lady with the babies come in.
Hi, Anne Hill, District 2. I remember a conversation I had with Sheriff Gary Koontz a few years ago, of course. And his comment to us out there in Angels Camp one day was, he was very happy that this county does not have homeless shelters because that brings in a lot of homeless people. It's like a magnet. And if you don't have homeless shelters, you're not putting out a lot of money from the county that it's a poor county. And it's just a comment that, conversation with him, that we don't need homeless people, we do not need homeless shelters, the cost is just more than this county can stand. Thank you.
Thank you. The public comment?
Hi, my name's Katie Abersch. I'm not really sure of the district. I'm thinking it's District 1. I'm right down the street. We've been here a year. We just purchased our home. My concern is, and I understand there's a problem, my concern is the location in which you want to put those five buildings. It is right next to the school, not just the elementary school. It's also right next to the preschool, my own school. It's next to the other, I believe it's Head Start, early intervention programs. It's also next to the high school. I think that's inviting a big problem. I think it's people being proactive to one issue but not planning for other issues that could arise. From what I gathered at the meeting I attended last week, there was no plan for safety at the school, at least at San Andreas Elementary. We came from Sacramento of the gated schools. They were opened at 8:15 for 15 minutes, closed, opened again at dismissal. We use those fields for soccer. We use those fields so my kids and other kids in the community can go play. We live in a very tight-knit community and we love it. That's why my husband and I fought very hard to stay here. I love my, I can leave my door unlocked and I understand the homeless is a problem. I'm not blind to that. I'm not uncompassionate towards that. However, please think of where you're putting it. Think of the location. Think of the fact that you're going to change everything. Think of the safety of the children. And I don't want to have to explain to my young girls, which they had to see in Sacramento a lot of, what the needles are on the ground. For example, quickly, we were downtown one day getting our hair done. We went to the top of the parking facility and there was someone ODing in the stairwell. I quickly made a beeline with my two young girls so we didn't have to see it. I just don't want to have to explain that stuff to my girls. I don't want them to have to feel unsafe. My oldest is almost to the point, she can walk across the street by herself. She's growing independence. That's all I think us moms, because there's a lot of us moms who are here today, who have children who go to San Andreas, who have grandchildren who go to San Andreas, whose children went to San Andreas. We just want you to consider the location. There's so many other places it can go and there's so many other possibilities you can look at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Matt?
Good morning, Board and Staff. I'm Matt Brock. I'm a third-generation San Andreas resident and I want to voice my objection to the proposed housing projects in San Andreas. First, I'll tell you about my professional experience interacting with homeless people. This may seem harsh and may not be politically correct. The fire engine I work on responds to approximately 2,200 calls for service annually. About 1,500 of those calls each year are calls for homeless individuals. I can count on two hands the number of calls that were not addiction-related. These events take place in cars, parks, homeless shelters, buses, trains, train stations, boarding houses, businesses, and homeless camps. The calls are for fights, arrests for criminal conduct, arrests for outstanding warrants, heroin, methamphetamine, and alcohol overdoses. When my fire engine is on one of those calls, we're not available to respond to another call for service. In the city, another fire engine is usually five minutes away to pick up the slack, but in our county and other fire engine resources, 15 to 20 minutes away at least. Same goes for the transporting ambulances and law enforcement. On many levels, we simply do not have the resources here to serve as a homeless population. Second, I want to tell you about the low-income subsidized, or the new term I think is workforce housing inventory in Calaveras County. Do you know, do you know that San Andreas currently has 75% of the county's low-income subsidized or workforce housing inventory? Right here in San Andreas, 75%. That statistic does not include whatever type of housing you would call, goes on at the Sierra Inn, which is formerly the Black Bart Inn. Should these housing projects be built here, San Andreas would have well over 90% of the county's low-income subsidized or workforce housing inventory. Every community should do its part and have housing options for all socio-economic demographics. For diversity purposes, this needs to be spread throughout the county. It's not healthy for a community to have over 75% of one type of housing, not to mention 90%. Calaveras High School is one of the highlights of San Andreas. It brings our town and community together. Did you know that Calaveras High School students call San Andreas Cranksterville? Here is what I propose for the property near elementary school. Partner with the County Office of Education, build a trade school for high school kids that are at risk. Have modern tools for them to learn to work with metal, wood, and computers. And through substance abuse education, teach these students on why you become homeless and how to avoid it. If the county truly wants to help fight homeless epidemic, use these funds, these grant funds, to build an inpatient substance treatment center. Help these souls fight the true demon that keeps most of them homeless, that's their addiction to substances. Once a person is sober, we can get them housing and a job. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any other public, anybody else want to speak? Cliff?
Morning. I'm here to speak about homeless too and the homeless shelters. I live really close to everything that you guys are proposing to do. And I've been dealing with these situations for almost 10 years. We have a lot of methamphetamines in this county. We have a lot of alcoholism in this county. And I watch as behavioral health tries to intervene and help these folks. And in some cases, they do help them. One in particular, I can tell you, it took about a year and a half to get her straightened out, but in that year and a half, there was a lot of damage done to our neighborhood because of not only what she was doing, but what the folks that she attracted did. And unfortunately, she went through it because they were passing her around and taking advantage of her situation. So I don't think that putting that next to a school or in San Andreas at all is an answer. We need to get it somewhere where it's on its own. There's many, there's many different ideas out there. I've been researching ranches, for instance, in Texas. In Austin, Texas, they have a ranch and that's where, that's where they gather and that's where they do the treatment and that's where they do everything they need to do to offer these folks a step up. What we're doing here in Calaveras County, and I've seen it for quite a while, is we are very willing, because we're generous people, to help people out of their situation. We help them out, but we don't help them up. That's the next step that we're not capable of in many cases. And what we need to get to that point, well, we don't have really anything in any type of program that does that. So what you're going to do is help them out, but you're not going to help them up. What you're going to do is help them out into our neighborhood. That's what you're going to do. And I have, I seen it with Visionary. I seen it with Visionary. Same thing happened. And they were congregating up there in bunches and I watched Sheriff Koontz chase them out, chase them around. It doesn't do any good if they're hurting our neighborhoods if we're trying to help them and what your, and your rate of success is very minimal. It hurts us. Please don't hurt our communities anymore.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Other speakers? Seeing none?
Hi, my name's Jessica Cloud. I actually moved here from Stockton. And so I've seen a community go that has taken the homeless and tried to help them. It closed our elementary school in Stockton, made it a ghetto. My parents moved us out of Stockton when we were 15 and I've slowly moved my family away from Stockton. We came here to have a different kind of community. And I feel like all you're going to do is just ruin it with these facilities that you're going to put in. My child goes to San Andreas Elementary and right now, I'm at the point where I'm going to register at Moke Hill Elementary because I don't like the situation that's being created for my family. And then eventually, we're going to move out of San Andreas because of this. And I feel like you're not giving us much choice. The excuses that Kristen made of why that property was purchased was because it was zoned properly. It was for sale. These aren't good enough reasons to put them next to an elementary school. When we brought the thing up to the principal about our concerns, we were told there needs to be fencing. Fences would just create other problems. No one is being sensitive to what we want in our community. You're just telling us what we get, pretty much. That's how I feel. So I feel like we should have had these meetings before the property was purchased, that we should have been a part of the discussion of where these things were going to go and not just told, this is your option. If you don't choose this, you're going to lose your funding. And then that's where you're at right now. There are rural areas all over this place that you could have chosen and worked with people in the housing area to change the zoning for places that are on Pool Station Road or even off Mountain Ranch Road. Why is it next to the elementary school is the biggest concern for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick editorial to the public. Everybody here, most of you guys are familiar with my rules. No comments from the audience while someone's up there speaking. If you want to do happy hands, that's fine. If you want to do a thumbs down, that's fine. But I'll have, thank you very much. You guys all know this and I would appreciate you respecting these rules. Beth?
Good morning. I was going over some old agendas and the issue of the small houses were noticed and agendized and brought to the public back in April. I think that it's sort of, it's not true that the public wasn't notified ahead of time. I also have a problem with the messaging. I think that it's really harmful to people to be labeled as severely or significantly mentally ill in public. I think that mental illness is a spectrum disorder that it, it's just wrong to stigmatize people publicly like this. I think that it's more apt to refer to people as disabled and not violate their HIPAA rights and the other more stringent rights that mental health services are bound to. There is no evidence out there that suggests that people who struggle with depression, anxiety, other, other health issues are any more violent than anyone else. I find that it, this is all about othering people where it's dehumanizing to the people that the county, that are most vulnerable. And I think that it's really a shame, I think it's really a shame that, that people are being cast in such a negative light when housing people saves communities, money, resources, police time. I don't know why people feel safer with having underserved, vulnerable people living on the streets with no bathroom facilities, with very little resources and options. I don't know why you think that's, why people think that it's better for people to be living in the elements and completely destitute and desperate. I think that it's just a real shame that our community is rallying against people who are ill and people who are struggling. And I would like very much for us to show more compassion and to stop being so fear-based. I know that in the article in The Enterprise, at least 24 of the children, or of the people in the Point and Town count are children. And when you say, what about the children? Let's think about the homeless children too. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Katie Murphy. I'm a San Andreas resident as well. I'm also president of the Parent Teacher Club at San Andreas Elementary. I am also a public health nurse, registered nurse. I have served my entire adult life helping those in need. I worked in Lodi and specifically worked with those that are underserved, underrepresented. So I don't want anyone to, on my behalf, think that we are being not compassionate. My concern is the location of where these projects are supposed to be taking place. I do believe that it is something that is a complicated topic and I don't know if we can all agree on that, that there is not a simple answer, that there is a problem. And just the fact that it is going to, that the property that is by the school is, by the school is very, very concerning. I have three children. They will all eventually go to San Andreas Elementary. We love it there. But it is concerning that we already have the amount of subsidized housing that we have, that I agree the county should have resources. I don't agree that this is the right answer. And I think that with San Andreas having what we already have, the remaining areas within the county should also be a part of the conversation and the location should be considered elsewhere. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to the regular agenda.
Item one on the regular agenda is from the Administrative Office to authorize the Board Chair to sign the response to the fiscal year 2018-19 grand jury report.
Mr. Alt?
As you're aware, this item is back before the Board after last week's recommendations from the Board. I've made changes as directed by the Board in the responses before you now. I also tried to encapsulate some of the feedback that we got in public comment about our timelines for response and some of the other items.
Questions? Bring to public comment. Come on up.
So responses for the grand jury report. I've been through four on this board. And it seems like the grand jury just really, the report just really doesn't mean anything to this county. Doesn't. It's just a response. And then it's over and then it gets buried and it's done. And you go on to the next one. Doesn't have any substance anymore. This is grand jury. It should have meaning and the things in it should be meaningful. There are a lot of really important issues within that report that are, that are very meaningful to our county and our citizens. A lot of people really don't pay attention to it because they don't understand it, but you know, grand jury just doesn't, grand jury report just doesn't seem to be that important, I guess, to try to, to try to rectify some of the issues that are going on with it. And I just don't think that's right.
Thank you.
Hello, Ralph Copeland, Copperopolis, D4. Also a member of the past and current grand jury. Let's play a game of what if. What if cannabis had a program where they taxed the people and you did a forensic account or forensic financial review of it? And you found out over two-thirds of course of this money issue that the, that we're going to spend $10 million for almost nothing. Boy, if that was cannabis, if Mr. Mills had his forensic accounting and the UO and found a $10 million deficit. All I got to say is that I appreciate you reviewing the grand jury. I also appreciate the grand jury itself as we are picked from the citizens, we're reviewed by our peers in the spirit of Court Judge Haley. We spend a year researching and developing the reports. This is public knowledge. And as the previous speaker said, well, I won't comment on that. He put it very well. Again, what if these reports were about cannabis? Thank you.
Thank you for your service. The comments on the grand jury responses. Very well, bring it back to the Board. Is there further discussion or questions? Supervisor Galli?
I appreciate the changes that were made in the grand jury report per the direction of the Board. And there were a couple of items. It's taking action on behalf of the CAO's office to report back to the Board and take action, excuse me, on some of the recommendations. And I'd like to move that the Board Chair sign the response to the current year's grand jury report.
Thank you. The comments, Supervisor Toffmeyer?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I'm going to abstain from this item. I was a former member of Jenny Lynn Veterans Memorial District Board, so I feel in my interest and their interest and the interest of this Board that I abstain.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Supervisor Mills? Well, I only do comment that I think that our response in finding one does cover what we were looking for in our initial discussion last week. I want to be sure that if we are setting up a timeline to establish a plan on how we're going to take this path forward, that it becomes a priority to some degree, that we don't let it slip. But it is a very complicated issue because we're talking about But it is a very complicated issue because we're talking about looking for land, we're talking about looking for additional housing of some type. There's a lot of pieces to this puzzle, and I think that the Humane Society found that out very clearly when they started to look at their situation of what they were going to do. So I just want to be sure that whatever we're doing here within the next six months, that we are going to have those recommendations back and that the Board will take some type of action and move forward on it.
Supervisor Stopper?
I also want to comment on some of the other issues. I appreciate, appreciate the work that's gone into animal services, but absolutely the members of our community came together as the grand jury, and a lot of this is constructive criticism as much as anything else, and it should definitely be considered. I brought up some of the code compliance issues prior, and they immediately had forwarded me their policy and procedures guidelines within that day, and I do appreciate that. I think some of these recommendations made by the grand jury, as Mr. Supervisor Mills said just now, not just the animal services issue, but all these issues need to be addressed because there's things I read inside this policy manual, and some of these recommendations, I think, need to be considered. I don't want to delve too deeply into it because we may be talking about it more in the future, but I agree with Supervisor Mills on the fact that, you know, not, not just the one issue, but all these issues we should follow up on and address them because what the grand jury does say does matter to us.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second it with that.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Coway, a second by Supervisor Stopper. Call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 401 abstention. Supervisor Toffenauer abstaining. Okay, we'll move on to item two. Do we need a second set up? You got it? Okay.
Item two is from the Sheriff's Office to conduct a study session of proposed ordinance Chapter 9.22 entitled Cannabis Background Clearance Badge.
Okay. It's a sheriff's item. Under Sheriff Macedo, welcome.
Good morning. Jim Macedo from the Sheriff's Office. I have some documents I'm going to deliver to the Board. It's some updated costing that was not included to the original. There's some extra copies that I'll leave here next to the podium. The sheriff asked that I send, send his regrets for not being here. He had a family medical matter he had to attend to today. As noted in the Board packet, we brought this matter before the Board on February 9th. The Sheriff's Office has explored some, some different options. One of the ones most notably, or maybe most impactful, was the potential for marijuana or cannabis-related business owners to conduct their own backgrounds. We reached out to the Department of Justice to see if those business owners could, in fact, receive those backgrounds, and they unfortunately are not able to do that. So that places the responsibility for review of those backgrounds back into the Sheriff's And with that said, I know most of you have seen this document. We've had a few committee meetings involving members of the Board. So with that, I'd like to open it up and take any questions or have a discussion about process as it relates to the background process and/or all the way through the appeals process. I realize the appeals aren't on the agenda today, but some of you may have questions pertaining to how the backgrounds affected the appeals process during the urgency ordinance.
If I could start, Under Sheriff, I just want to check in with you. I signed two committee members to take a look at this. Is there anything you guys want to report out as we start?
Well, I think that we, we kind of came to the conclusion, Under Sheriff, that in the course of the background check, having an independent company go out and do it was not going to provide the same level of information and control that you were looking for. Would you like to expand on that?
Well, if it's all right, I'd like to hear from you guys what the outcome was, if any, from the meetings. Then we can go on to questions.
Personally, the outcome I saw was that we, there was no consensus in the meeting to an end, and it was to bring it back to the Board for direction.
Okay, so you didn't get a resolution?
And that's, that's why I was looking for possibly expanding, just taking some of these issues that I know that the Board had concerns about and bringing these issues forward for a more full discussion.
Okay, what we'll do is we will, we could quiz the Under Sheriff, and we'll have some public comment, and we'll have a broader discussion. Does that work for everybody? Do you want to do it in a different order? You guys are the closest to this, then Dennis and Summer.
No, I, I would just like to be sure that what we discussed in that meeting and some of the reasons why those issues were important need to be brought out here so the full Board gets a chance to review those.
Very well. Go ahead. Supervisor Mills, I'm sorry, cut off.
No, that's quite all right. I was just, my first question was to the Under Sheriff regarding the background checks by independent companies.
Correct. We, we believe it's important to still maintain the questionnaire and also to receive the information related or relayed to us from those background investigations. That helps us make an assessment and a decision as it relates to the safety of, of the public and the approval of, of the issuance of the background card.
If I may, sir, to address that, the law's been looked into it, and if we were to put forward an ordinance and we were to outsource those background checks outside, we, there's no one that's willing to maintain the liability on that issue is the answer to that question that Mr. Mills brought up. So, you know, when we're discussing the employees during that meeting, and it being outsourced as opposed to doing it inside the Sheriff's Office inside the county, there's no outsourced place that was willing to let, use our parameters and is willing to take the liability on that based on, on that decision.
So we were primarily discussing employees, not the actual business owners themselves with this whole discussion. So I just wanted to make that very clear. Those parameters to you were very important, to the Sheriff, were very important.
They were. And just so I, I can be clear, the backgrounds on the employees are important, and the Department of Justice will not allow a cannabis or marijuana-related business to obtain an ORI number, which allows them to go into a DOJ database to check on their employees' backgrounds. That was one of the possible alternative solutions the Sheriff discussed, and based upon our research, that was not allowable. So we are back to where we were before as it relates to the Sheriff's Office conducting those background investigations.
Yeah, and there was also a concern, I know that Supervisor Stopper had brought it up, about the speed in which these background checks could be performed, considering the potential volume that you may see in applications.
Sure. That, that concern is noted. That's why there was a recommendation to start with small numbers of cultivation, business applications, to, in a sense, limit the numbers to avoid a large influx of people coming into the Sheriff's Office, essentially recreating, to a sense, what happened during the urgency ordinance with the other county departments. During a previous department-related meeting, not Sheriff's Department, but a variety of department heads and managers, there was a recommendation to limit that number to 55, or excuse me, 25, and expand at a later date. Certainly, that's the Board's decision. However, I would just keep in mind that based upon that decision that the Board makes, that could definitely affect not just the Sheriff's Office but other county departments. I do want to put one thing to rest, though, and one thing to bed. The inference that has been made that the Sheriff was slow-walking these or perhaps creating a de facto ban by slow-walking these is absolute nonsense. We're doing, we're here to do a thorough background to ensure that the public's safe and that we're not issuing these, these cards to people that are going to be a threat to the public to the best we can. So there, there was no slow-walking by the Sheriff's Office. There was no de facto ban. That is not some grand scheme in the Sheriff's Office. It's complete nonsense.
And you felt that you currently have staff available to undertake this program of doing these background checks?
We do have staff in place. We obviously, the document I provided to you today is a, an updated version of a tiered system based upon the results of the background. One of the things we discussed in our meeting with the, the committee, including Board members, was specifically to try and establish a tier system to move those people with no criminal background or no issues through the process not only quicker, but with a reduced cost of the background. We've done that in the document provided to you. But again, the numbers of people that come into the Sheriff's Office, we cannot, the Sheriff's Office cannot control that. I think the Board, the Board can through the ordinance. And so it's basically going to be dependent upon the decisions that, that are ultimately made. I can tell you that staff will work diligently on it. There's staff that are assigned to it, staff that's been preparing for it. There are lessons we learned during the urgency ordinance, which I think will probably help speed up the process this go-around. But the, the one thing I don't want to do is sit here and guarantee you that this is going to be like a McDonald's drive-through where you're, you know, you're in and out. But because we do want to be thorough, and we do want to make sure we're, you know, we're looking at safety issues or concerns.
And having all of the information contained within the Sheriff's Department, you will also be receiving any notifications of criminal history changes in a subsequent one-year period. So we're talking about coming back every year for an update on the cards or an update on the background checks?
That was discussed during the meeting, and that was, in fact, the Sheriff's recommendation, the Sheriff's Office recommendation. I don't want to speak for the district attorney. I believe the district attorney's going to be here today to speak if she's not already arrived, but that was the recommendation of those two offices. And that's not, that's not unique. A lot of businesses conduct, and even the government center to a certain extent, conduct similar ongoing backgrounds for certain employees.
I know that this particular section really deals with more of the background check, but there is no discussion about for those who fail the background check, their cards are no longer active, they're on a site. What are we going to have as far as a penalty, a fine, or something else as a result of them? I know the state is very clear, you know, it's $30,000 a day, but what about in our situation? How are we going to deter people from being on these sites without adequate identification?
If the ordinance is, in fact, passed and ratified and they violate the ordinance, it would be a misdemeanor, and we would file that through the district attorney's office. There would obviously be administrative consequences through the county, and that will be a decision made by the district attorney and/or the administrative hearing officer.
Just to point out, there is, in fact, an enforcement provision. It's in 9.22080, and there's a series of fines that are imposed upon both workers and owners if they're on the site without a badge.
I just wanted to bring that out so that before public comment starts that people are aware it's in that provision. Okay, that's all pretty much I have for now. I think that, is there anything else that we covered?
There's quite a bit we covered in there. Not all of it pertains. I mean, there was a lot of back and forth on a single issue when it comes to employees. And you, you maintain that you feel that you could process 25.
Yes.
Twenty, 25 total with employees.
Yes.
And we, we all knew that outside cannabis growers could never get an ORI number. It was for them to do a live scan through somewhere else, and we weren't able to apply what we had to that is, was the determination we came up with, right?
Yes, our records manager, who is the acting custodian of records, reached out to the Department of Justice, and that, that was the response that we received.
But as a county, we're able to file for another ORI number within the county, correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question. The Sheriff's Office has one.
Has one?
Yes.
So does HR?
Correct.
And we're able to put forward, for another one if we so choose as a county and put for a third ORI number through the Department of Justice?
There's a process that you have to go through, through the Department of Justice, to obtain an ORI?
Absolutely checked on it. Yes, sir.
I have a quick question, Under Sheriff.
Yes.
So, and I'm just tearing up for what we just went through here. So, so you're saying the Sheriff's Office is only capable of processing 25 grows?
No, that's not what I'm saying. That was the collective recommendation of the department heads.
That they only want 25 grows?
Well, I want to-
So if we have more than 25, do you have the capacity or do you not have the capacity to do more with this proposal?
Chair Garmendy, I think that's a fair question. What I don't have, what I don't have is a crystal ball, and I don't know the extent of, with which the employees are going to arrive, or those that are going to arrive requesting a background, what their criminal history, what their history is like, what their residential history, where they've lived. So I don't, I can't predict on, on a global basis how each one of these backgrounds, how long it's going to take. What I can tell you is that when all the departments discussed this, that number of 25 is what we collectively, not individually, but kind of collectively agreed to.
The departments within the Sheriff's Office? Are you speaking for the countywide?
Well, I don't want to speak for the other county departments.
You said all the other departments.
Well, we, we had, we had a series of meetings between, with department heads. Planning was involved. The DA was there. I can't recall exactly who else was there, but that was the collective decision that we all spoke about at that, that given time, that 25 was that number. That was before this process got fleshed out, for lack of a better term. Could we do more potentially? If they're quick and easy, then yes, we could potentially do more. Could these 25, if they all have the maximum number of employees and those employees have criminal histories or have lived a variety of places or issues that we have to research, it's going to potentially slow us down. What I, what I want to give you is reasonable advice so you can make a decision, and what I can't tell you is I cannot predict who's going to show up to do these. But I, what I can tell you is we could certainly report back to you if we're moving along. We're moving quickly. If we're able to get through those 25, or we're able to get through the first 10, we can certainly report back to, to the Board on how it's going, and that will give you an assessment on what you could do on perhaps a year-by-year basis. One of the other things that was discussed in that meeting, regardless of the number the Board decides, we could certainly come back based upon the information we've learned, and the Board obviously reserves the right and has the right to amend the ordinance.
So the answer is maybe?
The answer is it's dependent upon the circumstances. I'm sorry, sorry for that answer. I would love to be able to tell you, Supervisor, we will do this number.
Jim, it doesn't, I was just, if you knew you could do it, you know you can do it. If you're not sure, you're not sure, and I appreciate the honesty. I have questions about, since I know there's been kicking around outside agencies doing some of this work.
Sure.
In the Sheriff's Office, when you do a concealed carry weapons permit for somebody to carry a gun in public, there is a online process to do that now.
Correct.
How does that work? And is that something that could be applicable to this? Or is growing marijuana more dangerous than having a CCW? Help me understand what is available for outsourcing.
Okay, so you laid out three questions in there, so I'm going to break those down for you, one by one. The permidium process, which we use for CCW, is online, and your question to the extent of, is that, is there something we could do relating to marijuana? Give it time. Somebody will develop a program for some sort of online cannabis relating, related backgrounds. I looked into it because I know there are private background companies that do backgrounds for certain- for certain contractors, for government, governmental agencies. But I was not able to find one that was specific to cannabis. So, I think I've answered that portion. As far as it being more dangerous or not, generally speaking, the concealed weapons permit process, it is thorough. There are things that would exclude one from carrying, obviously, a firearm. I have to be honest with you, the clientele for those seeking concealed weapons permits, compared to the people we're dealing with in cultivation sites, there tend to be background differences in those two. And there tends to be a difference in criminal history. I know there are some people that have both. But to the extent with what we went through during the urgency ordinance, those were very different backgrounds that those, those folks applying for those separate permits came from. And so, therefore, I understand where the board is wanting to look at those two as comparable, but I really do not think they are comparable issues.
Okay. When you do your background checks for your employees, your techs, people in the jail?
Yes.
Even your officers, you use third parties to do background investigations, don't you?
We do third parties to do the, to the background, but not the running through the databases. And that's where I think there's a difference.
Okay.
We don't use a third party to run fingerprint criminal history, and it's a different animal. Let me step back for a moment and explain, explain this, and I think this probably will be educational for everyone. When you run a pre-employment background check for someone, it is very different than running a criminal history on someone. Pre-employment backgrounds alone only allow you to check for specific crimes that would affect that employment. And this is separate for peace officers. A full criminal background check on just an individual, per se, a suspect in a crime, that is much more thorough, and that is a much more comprehensive background. As an example, if we were doing a background on a person who wanted to work at a childcare facility, only certain crimes would show up. A public intoxication arrest, per se, would not show up on someone applying to work at a child daycare facility. It wouldn't exclude them from working at a child daycare facility.
Is that because it's in the code, it's saying this is excluded?
Correct. State, well, state law allows you to do, or state law, I should say prohibits you from doing, with the exception of peace officers and certain other positions, it precludes you from doing as thorough of a criminal history investigation as you would, per se, on a suspect in a crime. Are you with me?
I understand. I guess my, my point is, is you're laying out, you lay out the criteria, and the third party checks that criteria.
In which case?
In any case.
No, so, that's why-
I'm not talking about a criminal background check.
A sheriff's office employee, we run them through a DOJ, we take their fingerprints. It is incredibly thorough for a sheriff's office employee, specifically a peace officer.
Well, how about civilians?
Okay. For a civilian, a baseball coach, child daycare facility, they're fingerprinted, and you're only notified if certain crimes come up that would affect that specific employment.
Right.
And that's how we're kind of dealing with the marijuana issue. We're not-
But you feel pretty confident about that third party? I mean, when you have those things, you feel like most of it's in there?
I think you're missing, you're missing me. The third party, the outside background person, doesn't deal with the fingerprinting part and the results from the Department of Justice. They conduct the interviews of neighbors, family, the interview with the employee, but they don't, they're not the ones receiving the criminal history check. That still comes back to the sheriff's office.
Right. I understand that. That's all my questions.
I have a couple of questions.
You have a tough one, Al.
Jim, I want to be clear on this employee portion of this. You're saying 25, and they're employees. So, what if I come to the county and I don't have an employer, but I want to get a badge so I can go to a farm and seek employment? So, I come to the sheriff's office, and you may have an influx of that. Is that, is that any different? I mean, it may add, the employers bring five that they want, and then you have an influx of other people coming in. How are you going to deal with that? Are you going to do them separate, away from the employers seeking their cards and the employees' cards? Because like in my industry, we have, I may certify somebody to weld, but they can take their papers and walk off and go somewhere else, so I'm-
It's a good question. And it was discussed, I think, during our committee meeting to a limited extent. And we agreed that, yes, those that had applied through the county and gone through the process would get priority compared to, for lack of a better term, a speculator or an uninvolved employee. However, I have to tell you, I think the board has the authority to direct us in that manner to a certain extent, to a certain extent. If that's the board's preference, then you guys could certainly recommend that in the passage of the ordinance, that priority be given to someone, as long as that's lawful and that passes county council's review. I believe the board has the authority to direct that, that the sheriff prioritize.
And then I have another question. I had a conversation with Megan about, in this ordinance. And it has to do with the hearing, appeals hearing.
Yes.
Prior to us having, have an administrative hearing officer, the appeals came to this board, and we were overwhelmed, so we set that situation up to where we, okay, we'll set up a hearing officer. And we also have appeals hearings all the time here in the boardroom on different items. In one item here, on my page, packet page number 35, is page 11 of 16, 9.22.100 Administrative Hearing Procedures. Item number C. It says, "Witnesses shall be sworn. The hearing officer may question witnesses at any time and recall them if necessary for further testimony." We've never sworn anybody in any hearings here in the board. I had a conversation with Megan about it, and she said it's within our purview to be able to do that and have it in our code. But I just, we've never sworn anybody in here, and I think Megan wants to chime in on this.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the hearing officers have been, have been swearing witnesses in for hearings in front of the administrative hearing officer. And so, this is consistent with the practice that has been in place for administrative hearings in front of the Office of Administrative Hearings. And that is allowed under Government Code 27721. So, I, the reason that the 9.22 includes administering oaths is because that is specifically outlined in the government code for the process with administrative hearing officers.
I just wanted to have that discussion in case the board might want to bring that up. We don't swear people in here. However, that process involves swearing them.
We would be-
And I get, and from what our discussion was and what you sent me, the difference is if we have appeals hearing here in the board and we don't swear anybody in, and opposed to that, if they're sworn in, they could perjure themselves and be prosecuted for perjury.
And I think that's important. I think if you want to take care of the compliant growers, the growers that are trying to comply, that are being forthright and honest, I think it's important that you differentiate the two. And during the previous urgency ordinance, there were, there were clearly both types. And I think while some may look at that as, oh, you're trying to, you know, punish or put, put some growers in jeopardy, I think you really need to look at that as, no, you're protecting those that are being honest and forthright and are complying.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have at this time.
To, some more questions on the appeals process. So, we'll be, whether it's an owner or, or a worker, the, I believe, the way I'm reading this is it applies to both the same if they're denied on the appeal process, correct?
Correct. However, the-
Correct.
However, obviously, the end result could be different.
Right. Well, yeah, apparently, one would have a job or not have a job, the other would have a business or not a business.
Correct.
Here on page two of the handout you just handed us out to earlier, second, second paragraph above staffing, persons who have been denied a CBCB, which would apply to, to the workers, due to criminal history which disqualifies them pursuant to county ordinance 9.22, will have the right to an appeal process. The costs associated to this process are reflected as $1,248.05. On the appeal process, is there anywhere else in the county that we charge $1,248.05?
I have no idea what the county charges-
No, we don't.
Did you want me to answer the question?
Well, you have no idea. You answered.
Well, I'm sorry, you interrupted me, and I wasn't done answering.
Okay. Go ahead and finish, Jim.
I'm not aware of what the county's appeal processes are as it relates to other code issues. That's not the sheriff's office purview, and I, we're not in the business of doing appeals, with the exception of this matter, and the towing authority.
Understood. So, the job of the sheriff's office is to enforce the law, correct?
Yes.
Right. So, it's not to put forward a regulatory ordinance? It's the job of the board, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you have a question from the board? Will, you have a comment? We'll move to public comment, so a few comments in three minutes, and I'll ask everybody to be respectful, it's not always easy to do public comment, and to be respectful and make our own comments.
The district attorney's office is here. I don't want to interrupt public comment, but-
District Attorney, you have 15 minutes.
Although I do talk fast, I could try, if you wish. Okay, thank you. Good morning, Barbara Yook, District Attorney. I apologize for being late. I was having some technical difficulties with my video. First of all, I wanted to just address the, the number of 25. I was at that meeting where kind of there was consensus that 25 was the maximum number that we could handle right now in order, with the current resources, in order not to experience what we said, what we experienced last time and set the, set the, set the industry up for failure.
You talk about the "we." This is sheriff's office and district attorneys?
No, the county, the county.
You're talking about there's a consensus among all county departments?
No, I want to clarify who was at the meeting, as I recall, because it was more than just planning and my office and the sheriff's office.
If there was a consensus, no one ever brought me in on that loop, so.
So, it was code, code compliance was also there, the ag commissioner, we also had a representative for environmental health. So, I think it's important to kind of remember the history and what happened and what worked, what didn't work. And if the county, you know, it seems that we are going down this road, and we heard repeatedly a few years ago about, oh, we're building the bus as we're driving down the road, we're building the airplane as we're flying it. We should maybe look at what's really the situation we have here today and try to plan and look at our foundations so that we have the best infrastructure going forward for success. And so, that's, that's why I just wanted to address that point. With respect to the sheriff's office bringing this forward and being willing to, you know, engage in the process and conduct the background checks, as DA, I'm grateful for the, to the sheriff for being willing to devote resources and time and energy to that, for, you know, for two reasons, and I will try to keep it brief. One is that I do believe that conducting the background checks as proposed in this program is, is a good way to try to ensure its success, to protect growers, to help growers be successful, and also to protect the public. The, the program as it is does send a signal as to who the county wants to invite into the system, and it, and I think it would hopefully discourage those who cannot pass from applying. Number two, what we experienced last time with the influx of people and the people who would come and go from grow to grow, or be maybe part of a criminal organization and come in and then leave, is that when we did have crimes that occur at the grow sites or with respect, with, related to the grow strike, grow sites, is that we had a very difficult time locating witnesses, locating victims. We did have numerous cases that were very serious cases, and, you know, we weren't necessarily concerned about what's going on with the grow, maybe it was a registered grow. We were more concerned about the violent crime, the robberies, the assaults with deadly weapons, the brandishing of firearms, the sexual assaults that occurred. And we had a difficult time proving our cases because we could not find the witnesses, didn't have good IDs on the witnesses, and the victims as well. So, we ended up having to dismiss some cases, we ended up having to reduce charges that we really did not want to do, but we had to because we had issues of proof, because of the difficulty with locating, identifying and locating witnesses. So, for those particular reasons, you know, there's, there's more, and maybe we'll have an opportunity, I will have an opportunity to comment later on other issues that the board brings up. But I just wanted to express my gratitude to the sheriff for being willing to wade into this and be involved in the background process. I don't think, I know some other counties are not doing it. It's a big burden. But I believe that he believes it is the right thing to do, which is why they have put this effort into it. They have put in far more hours into it than I have, building up to it. And if you do agree to allow the sheriff to participate in this way, they're going to be putting far more hours and resources into it going forward than my office will. But because of the reasons I laid out to you, I am grateful to that, and I hope that you will accept it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Move forward on public comment, but I'd be curious if anybody's listening, I mean, we now lumped code, ag, environmental health, the DA, and the sheriff's office apparently endorsing the 25 caps, so that's interesting news. I'd be interested if code and ag were agreeing with that, so, or environmental health. Anyway, let's move on to public comment. If we could go five standings, I keep track, we'll let this go. Will, you start.
Well, more, and Rachel Calaveras. And I was a vineyard manager in Napa County once upon a time, and I hired fieldhands casually, seasonally, and so forth, and never ran a background check on any of them. It would have been unwise to do that. Anyway, it looks to me like we're going through a lot of regular roll here to hire fieldhands, permits and background checks. And I don't know what county ordinance 922 is, but what kinds of crimes make a person disqualified for ag work? It's a puzzlement. I'm really puzzled about this. Thank you.
Well, Hal?
Good morning, board, and also county taxpayers association. I agree with Will. Looks like we're going back to logic 1A. Why are we having these background checks? The industry has been going on now for 50 years or so. It's a black market industry because it's banned by government. Now, it's emerging through the states to become legitimate. So, we have, probably anybody that's involved with it has been involved with, in the black market. The black markets are always caused by government, they're not caused by anybody else. So, it's good news that we're getting away from the black market, which reduces crime. Yet, the black market can be expanded by not just banning something, but making it so difficult through government regulation and bureaucracy that it's better to go black marketing than it is to register. And if we don't know the reason for these background checks and what we do with the information, probably the best thing we could do, considering the amount of support for these badges, is to put a sunset clause on it and allow maybe three, five years that the law, badge law would expire, unless there was some reason to continue it. If there's no reason to continue it, then just go ahead and let it expire. That's assuming that you pass this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. The public comment. If you'd like to speak, if you could, please line up, we'll move things quicker.
Marty Crane, District 5. As I came in to the lobby, I was, I understood that there was a statement made that the reason that the background check for the cannabis industry was far more extensive than the one for concealed carry was, correct me if I'm wrong, was that, that people in the cannabis industry would have greater- would have greater, what do you call it, a restless or whatever, you know what I'm trying to say, than those with a concealed carry. I have to object to that because I'd like to know. So, where's the data that supports that? I mean, has anyone ever, if you don't do a background check on the concealed carry or the extensive, the same one, then how would you know? So, I'm just thinking, if we say this, I'd like to see the proof of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
I'm glad the supervisors are willing to spend a good percentage of their time talking about how to regulate pot. One of the previous speakers was talking about why you have to go through this thing for checking out people that are going to be working at a pot farm. Hopefully, they won't lose it and shoot people that might be stealing their pot. Along with this is the governor is now spending $20 billion to alert the public that e-cigarettes, which double S-T-H-C purveyors. What a can of worms.
Susan Morse, District 2, representing Calaveras residents against commercial marijuana. We object to the board of supervisors proceeding with its consideration of a background clearance ordinance in advance of and independent from the evaluation of the county's proposed cultivation ordinance. The county is putting the cart before the horse. There is currently a permanent cultivation ban in place, and the county cannot assume that the cultivation ordinance will be passed. We have certified, excuse me, we have identified numerous problems with the environmental review for the proposed cultivation ordinance, and more specifically, the lack thereof. One of the many problems is, under the California Environmental Quality Act, the county cannot piecemeal its review of pertinent pieces of the proposed regulatory program, including the background clearance ordinance. This ordinance must be considered in conjunction with a proposed cultivation ordinance with a joint environmental review. One of the reasons CEQA prohibits a piecemeal approach is to prevent momentum from building for a particular policy before that policy has even ever been reviewed. That is precisely what the board is trying to do here with its premature consideration of the background clearance ordinance. Thank you.
Chair?
Thank you.
I didn't get a copy.
No, of either one. Either of the...
Morning, Board. Bert Schufelt, Memphis, California. Something I think that's been lost here is that this pool that we're talking, well, first, a quick point is we need these badges for our legal operating dispensaries in the county so that they can have a more streamlined business process trying to make taxes for the government to spend here. I know that, I understand they're having trouble getting their employees quickly behind the counter at their dispensaries. Also, as far as this pertains to the cultivation ordinance, the board has directed staff to bring back an ordinance that is limited entirely to people who've already been through this process during the UO with the sheriff. So, like me, we've all been through a background check already. So, it's not like a whole bunch of random, you know, criminals are even in the running here. It's people who were here, who paid taxes, who have families here and are trying to rebuild their lives from what was taken away from us with the ban. So, I think that's been lost. You know, we've all been vetted. You're not getting some strangers. And the employees, it's gonna, it's, you know, that might be the only time I'm going to take a bullet for Macedo is if one of my employees tries to shoot him. Like, what the, no business owner is going to bring some wing nut out there who's gonna have to, you know, that's gonna be my responsibility. I'm not going to employ people who are gonna put me, my family, my land, my future in jeopardy from this. That's, I mean, that's patently ridiculous to worry about the employees so much. They're not, we're trying to build businesses. We're all grownups. It'd be beneficial for us all to have a conversation where we all act and treat each other like that. Thank you.
I think there's maybe a little bit of misunderstanding about how these businesses actually work. For years now, most of us have been employing our neighbors and friends and people well-known to us to help us bring in our harvests. And it's just not, you know, you hear about trimmigans coming in from outside, but they're not put to work very often, you know, like at least in the reputable places. We tend to go with word of mouth and people that we know. Most of our helpers work, are related to us or are people that have been known to us for many, many years. I actually do ask, or did when I had a viable business before the ban, I would ask people, are you willing to submit to a background check? And they all said absolutely. So, I don't really object to it in principle. I just think that we're being stigmatized in a way that is really unfortunate. We're the ones that the sheriff went on many local cable access shows and said that he wasn't seeing problems with our groups so much. You know, we want to do right by the county. We paid our bills. We paid our taxes. We've jumped through your hoops. But we're not just an ATM machine that can afford to pay $1,000 for an appeal here, $1,000, you know, 500 for an appeal there, rezone here, do this, do that. It's, there are limits to how much we can, how many hoops we can jump through, especially after being shut down for two years. I just wish that we could sit down and have an actual working group of different stakeholders and that we could approach this in a way that's not so combative and not so, just such a lack of trust. The mistrust is going both ways now, and we need to come to terms with how to live next to each other peacefully and with as few impacts as possible. When I hear only 25 farms can be vetted, that doesn't make sense to me since there were 25 hires that were hired during the UO that have been repurposed throughout the county. I mean, technically, it sounds like you want one employee per farm when we start talking numbers like that, and that just is not sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else standing up to give public comment, I will close public comment. John, Sheriff, you want to make a statement, and then we're going to take a 10-minute break.
Sure. I just wanted to respond to a couple of the questions and comments. There was a comment concerning government regulation and overregulation, and I agree. There's a lot of overregulation. However, we're trying to ensure public safety, and I know I've mentioned that a lot, but we're more specifically trying to ensure public safety, not only for the people that are working at those sites or the owners, but the other roughly 44,000 people that live in the county that aren't involved in cultivation or marijuana. There was a comment request about data on the marijuana backgrounds comparative to the CCW backgrounds. We had, we have far, during the urgency ordinance, we had far more, we had far more individuals rejected from the ability to grow marijuana than we do on concealed weapons permits. That data is certainly available, certainly could be dug up. Didn't know that was going to come up here today, but the rejection rate was significantly higher. Most people don't apply for a concealed weapons permit if they know that it's going to get rejected. The same did not necessarily happen with the marijuana urgency ordinance, and that's what our, that's what the data and the information would be based upon. To the extent about why we need to do this, and the DA touched on this, and I think if I was a board member, I would want to know this. When a crime is committed in a cultivation site, and I'm not talking about all cultivation sites, but I'm talking about a cultivation site that tends to have transient employees or transient individuals, and we arrive and we are attempting to find out who the perpetrator is, and we are only provided with a nickname. It is very expensive to investigate that crime. It is very time-consuming to investigate that crime. It is also very difficult to investigate that crime to a successful result to where the victim seeks or sees some sort of justice. When we have a full name and date of birth, it is much easier to figure out who the witnesses are, who the perpetrator is, and we can track that person down quicker. It allows for the prosecution to speed up their process from the DA's office, and essentially, the entire process could be less time-consuming, and when we know who the perpetrator is...
I'm sorry. Have you, have we had that happen on a legal registered site?
Yes, we have, and we've had to chase, and we've had to chase people, Supervisor Garemandy.
And how is that different than any other crime that's committed where you don't know and people are calling out nicknames? Someone knocks off a grocery store. Is that specifically different or is that just the nature of crime in general?
It's the nature of what has occurred at cultivation sites. I think it's because the monetary value of the marijuana, what's at stake particularly during the harvest. There are, there are sometimes disagreements that are originally related to business issues, and then they become criminal issues, but we had not seen a collection of individuals involved in criminal history. I mean, quite simply, Supervisor Garemandy, our crime rate went up. Our violent crime rate went up.
I'm speaking specifically about legal registered sites.
Sure.
Not about all the, I know, hey, you know my district. I know there's all kinds of stuff going on, but I just want to make sure that we're speaking about apples and apples.
Sure. And I can tell you that registered sites were not excluded from these problems and issues unequivocally. They were not excluded. Was there a lower rate? We did some statistics, and I believe I presented those to the board at one point in time. I believe we have a chart. It was, they were reduced, but they were not excluded, and I want to make that point real clear. When you have a violent crime, particularly a heinous violent crime, you want to catch that perpetrator quickly. You want to identify who that is so that that crime doesn't perpetuate elsewhere. And that's the point that I want to get across as it relates to the expense and the time and the need to know who these folks are. We want to know who these folks are. Another point that was mentioned was vaping. The vaping issue specifically with cannabis is kind of an emerging issue. I think California specifically has been impacted. What you're going to start seeing is, hopefully I can pronounce this word correctly, it's medical investigations trying to determine where this, some of this, some of these substances are coming from. I don't know that law enforcement will be directly involved in that, but I think Calaveras would be ahead of the game because what's going to happen is they're going to try, trying to find the source of some of these cannabis-related substances that are tied to these illnesses. It would certainly be nice to know that if a particular grow site in the county was tied to the sales of something that was causing somebody sick, that we could track down that person, have a discussion with that person, possibly get that product out of the system as quickly as possible. I think you're going to see that as an emerging trend, not just in California, but across the United States. I think by us having an idea who's there and who's responsible for manufacturing some of these substances will give us a head start as it relates to that.
If I may say something to that, sir?
Yes.
The state has, in fact, put forward METRIC, which traces back each manufactured item, if it's part of the legal market, back to the originating source. And at that point, the state does have, have inside METRIC, the laboratory, the laboratory checks on it when it comes to sampling, and that's the path to trace it down to where it's manufactured if it's within the legal market. Because we're talking about the legal market here as opposed to the black market. Correction?
Apples and apples.
Well, that's an excellent question. Is this ordinance being drafted for just those that are going to be entirely compliant? I think that's an important question.
What do you mean by that?
Is this ordinance being drafted with the intent that everybody's going to be compliant?
9.22?
Correct.
I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
Wouldn't you have to be compliant to be in 9.22?
What about those who choose not to get the background?
Well, then they're not going to get a license.
Or those that choose to hire people who don't get, that don't complete the background?
They don't get a license.
That's the point. There has to be an ordinance.
So, the answer is yes.
I don't, I don't agree based upon what we saw. I think we know people are going to violate this, and that's what I'm trying to get ahead of.
So, I don't think I understand.
So, when we initiated the urgency ordinance, people violated that?
I understand, but we're writing an ordinance for people who are entering into a legal system to move forward a business. We're not talking about those people outside that. Obviously, if they don't enter into this, they're not a legal business. So, tell me where you're trying to go here because I'm not following.
Where I'm trying to go is I think it's short-sighted to only realize that people, everybody's going to comply with this. This culture has not always been overly compliant, and if everybody was going to be compliant, there would be no penalty as it relates to this ordinance. So, what I'm trying to get across is that the board needs to understand this is not just being written for those ultra-compliant people that come up here and speak to you on a regular basis, that operate a clean farm with no black market, with no backdoor, with, that's not reality in this county. I'm here to tell the board that's not the reality. There's going to be people that are going to violate this ordinance, and you need to account for that, not only in this, but in the ordinance. I'm simply making it...
If everybody followed all the laws, we wouldn't need the sheriff's office.
I agree.
Right.
With some exception. With some exception.
As goes with crosswalks, sir. I drive through town consistently. I see people skipping the crosswalk. It's everything in life, and if everybody was, everybody followed every law, we wouldn't have the need for the sheriff's department or laws for that matter anyways because they would all be ethically correct. But I do want to say that you have given us good reason why, you know, even through the meeting we had before, you have given us good reason for the need or the want to vet certain individuals, as the DA had brought up earlier. I just, I guess I can get into this in the deliberation here in a moment.
We're gonna get into a discussion. Jim, is there anything else quick you want to say? And then we're gonna take a 10-minute break right now.
Let me add something for a break because I think that if we write laws, it's only going to be for those who want to be compliant, and you've repeated that over and over again. The sheriff said in the past that the history that we've had on these is most of these issues are not surrounding the permitee, but the employees, and that most of the cases that are prosecuted are the result of bad behavior from employees. So, I just want to be sure that we don't overwhelm the system. We don't overwhelm your department, the DA's office, or any other department in the county with whatever decision we make. We did that with the urgency ordinance. I was sitting out here when that all happened. We've got to be able to properly anticipate what the needs are to be compliant and to be sure that we can meet those needs. If we feel, as you've said before, that we need to expand on those in the future, fine, but the whole point revolves around the employees. And if we can simply do what we do from our end in establishing policy, that will help your job and will help the DA's job as well. Am I off-base here?
I think it's a fair statement.
Okay. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. So, return at 10:40. All right. Welcome back to Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. We are discussing background ordinances 9.22. We finished public comment. We will bring in the discussion back to the board. We'd like to begin. Supervisor Stopper.
After sitting down with the sheriff and the DA, they have put, you know, some good reasoning behind the need for a CBCB. And it also concerns me overwhelming the sheriff's department with, with, with a load when, on a regulation ordinance, when they also have, you know, crimes, crimes to work on out there and people, people to protect. As this ordinance sits before me, I made this clear in the past, that it's like putting a square peg in a round hole. It seems like a bad business structure to me, and it's very, I, I don't see it being successful as, as it's put before us. Not, not so much, I mean, for, it's for the board to decide what their appetite is on, on these, on these different disqualifying findings here. But I would like to propose an idea that we've been going around. In years past, multiple supervisors and other people in the community have asked for an audit of, let's say, the, the fees for the permit structure in the past. I think Supervisor Mills on multiple occasions was questioning on how the money was spent and so on. I think that we can put forward an idea of possibly a cannabis department, and we have the opportunity to apply for an ORI code where they can facilitate this job getting done, and it won't take from the sheriff's time when it comes to working on crimes. I think that there would be better tracking of where the fees go in the future. I think that they can concentrate on a single task, and it wouldn't be taking from individual departments, because I, I believe some of the departments have said that they only can do so many. I mean, the sheriff's department, you know, I understand them have only be able to handle so many numbers. The DA's office, they don't have anything to do with regulations, so, you know, they're, they're only here in support of background checks and supporting the sheriff and through the process. So I, I think that possibly we can, you know, after we find out what the board has appetite on this structure of these background findings, that we can possibly put forward an idea where we, you know, for, for all purposes intense, it can go bleed over into 17.95 on, on a, for the cannabis department, be able to facilitate doing these things, and the cannabis department would strictly be paid for through permit fees.
That's a, so the proposal is, as I understand it, to create a cannabis department or, that can apply for ORI, allow for better tracking of fees, expenses for this county, and remove this, and, and allow the sheriff to work on catching bad guys and paper pushing to cannabis department. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there other ideas where you guys want to discuss this?
No, I want to push your button, Dennis.
All right. I don't know how to moderate this one. Supervisor Calaveras.
I really support the concept of a cannabis department. I've heard enough comments the last few months. I mean, does this go to planning? Does this go to code enforcement? Does this go to the sheriff? There's so many permutations going on that having it centralized, I think would be a good idea. I mean, I look at the cost on some of these, these fees. I looked at the ordinance and the, on a license, the sheriff has to sign off on it, so you have a tech that does it. It then goes to the lieutenant. The lieutenant gives it to the undersheriff, and then the sheriff signs off on it. Well, if the lieutenant isn't competent enough to sign off on it, maybe we should get new lieutenants, no offense, undersheriff. But, you know, they're qualified to do it. I think that we have used annuities to do background checks in other departments. We could use them to do it, have the skill set to do it here. I believe the business owners that have applied in the past, that will be eligible to apply in the future, have all been vetted, so we're going to vet them again. I don't have an issue with doing that. I think they have a buy-in to make sure that they, hopefully, to the best that they can, have the ability to hire people that are not going to be the problems now. Yes, will there be some? I'm sure there will. I've always supported a card or badge system. I like the idea of doing a badge system where the workers can go from site to site. I think that's fine. I think that having an ORI number where the owners will have their employees, they are responsible for making sure they have the background check, because they can't get a card without the background check. And the, the results of the investigation, the, from DOJ or FBI, will come back to the cannabis department, whatever we should do. I also strongly support that we apply state... that we apply state rules, that we don't start elaborating on what state rules are because we're making this more difficult for the people that are going to be in the business. We're making it more time-consuming for county employees that are involved. Let's stick to what the base is. The state has some very significant, specific rules that people have to apply to apply for their license. And I think we should just follow those. I support that we can do independent companies however the business owner wants it to be. Whether they come to the sheriff's office and they get fingerprinted like they do to be a volunteer in the library or to walk a dog or to work for the Area 12 Agency on Aging. I think we can do the same thing. I don't think we need to set up a separate system. So I support what Supervisor Stoppa have recommended. I do want to get, excuse me, to one thing under the ordinance on number F, under section two findings, honesty and compliance with the law of particular importance. Thank you, it's page 39. I have on page 39. And because of proper record-keeping, it, it's, the onus needs to go back to the business owner. The onus should not be on the county. And it talks about concern of the black market to ensure proper accounting, local taxes, with track and trace. If these business owners are doing what the state law says, which they have to do to get their license, then that would be a, not, in essence, for the most part, a non-issue. So I support the concept and I think we should pursue it. Of course, I haven't asked the CAO if he wants to take it over.
Well, let's, let's see if we got what we're bringing out in a second. Dennis, you had some comments?
Yeah, I'm sure that the sheriff's department, when they set up these fees, did their proper nexus study to determine those costs are correct. So there is a basis and foundation under Prop 26 or any other methodology to determine these fees are as close to accurate as possible. And I'm sure that they're subject to review. I am concerned about who's tracking the hours that have gone into 9.22 as well as any other ordinance that we seem to spend a lot of time with staff putting together. And are we going to be going down the same road as the urgency ordinance that we just really don't know? I heard a comment about paying taxes. And I just had a conversation with Sullivan and that's not correct. We, all the taxes, taxes on measure C are not paid. And I'm also concerned about the GUR case and what, what may happen there as well. But, and let's go to timing for a minute. If you wanted to talk about permittees or, or the actual farmer himself, getting a, going through the background check process, he's going to have to go through that to get a permit from us. And I have to go to the state and get their temporary or provisional, I think is what they're going to call it, or they call it. There's, there's a time lag between their background check and the actual ability to get a state license to begin doing the actual activity. Unless this board decides that we're going to be like the urgency ordinance, we're going to start activity before we get the state license. That's up to them. But there would be a lag period in here where employees then could be processed separately at a little bit later point. So that would help with the backlog. In the disqualifiers that are listed in this section, I've heard many, many of the sheriff's reasonings for including them in there and the purpose of them. I remember the conversation that we had with Tabitha with Bureau of Cannabis Control. She said very clearly, you don't rely on the state rules. You build your own bus. You decide how you're going to run that bus. And don't expect us to help you with it. Don't expect us to provide you the financial assistance, whatever it was. But she did repeat something over and over to us. She said it on May 30th at Couch. She said it again in another meeting, go slow. Because whatever you build, it's going to be very difficult for you to unwind it. So start small, go slow. She also reiterated that track and trace is not in place right now. It's not fully functional. So anytime that we start depending upon the state or the state ability, the first thing you want to look at is how many people are in the Bureau of Cannabis Control at the state level? How many permits have they processed? How many have they not processed? They've just had to literally do provisional licensing because they can't get it done? And how long is it going to take before all those provisionals get? And where will those people coming from Calaveras County fall into that? And how long will it take them to get an actual full-blown license, not a provisional, from the state? So these are all questions that still remain to be answered. But I have to trust that Tabitha knew what she was talking about when she said, start small and go slow. And, and that there's, there's a reasoning for that. Is, is that we're going to leave our staff, in essence, to be responsible for whatever this board puts up. And I don't want us to repeat an urgency ordinance. That should be the goal here. We learned, we should have learned from it. Let's not do it again that way. Let's find a way to do it that is very controlled, very moderated. So we don't put people like the district attorney's office in a corner trying to figure out how to unwind things that happened very badly. And I think that that was the point that she made. That was the point that the undersheriff made. Is, is that once you get to these sites, there's an investigative process that's going to be very difficult to do if we don't do this right.
Thank you. Other comments from the board?
I, I just want to say I support my recommendation and I think that, as to the growing before state licensure, that, that, that's a, that's an automatic disqualifier within the state licensure system along with ours. And I think that possibly if we do come up with a, at least a majority to support what I have proposed, that we go through this item by item and work it through in 9.22.
Okay. Let me see, Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah. Got a couple of comments on this. I'm going to pull a Callaway here and say, I'm not clear on what exactly you're saying. You're, you're saying you want to set up a whole new department. We're just going to create this department and we want to do it today. To do what? To issue licenses, to do the background checks after the licenses are issued? You don't go through planning? You don't, you just go through this one department for all of your needs? Are we cutting the sheriff's department completely out of all background checks? They won't be involved at all, so they can just go fight crime and, and go do paperwork is what was said? I'm just not sure exactly everything that's being said here, what direction we're going. Are we going to rewrite 922 right now? We're going to go through and just cut where it says sheriff out of it and put cannabis czar? I, I, I'm not sure what's being proposed, where, where we're going, what's being asked. We, we've had comments before about, on study sessions on what we would like to see in the ordinance. We have department heads here that met. And in, in, in my opinion, they lived through an urgency ordinance. They're the experts. I'm not a sheriff's officer. I'm not an undersheriff. I'm not a DA. I'm not the planning department head. I'm not Health and Human Services. I, I, they're the experienced people. They're the ones that brought this, put this together and brought it to us. We gave direction to them and what we wanted. Now we're going to do a bout phase because we don't like what we're hearing and what's being presented to us. And we're going to say, well, you know what? Thank you, staff, for all your time and efforts into this thing. We're going to go ahead right now and, and rewrite the whole thing and create a whole new department because we don't like what we're hearing and what's being said. And then we're not sure on where we're going. We're not going to, we're not going to put something together here and then do another study session. We're going to adopt this new ordinance in this new department. From what I'm hearing, they're wanting to do, go through. And, and that's what we're going to do, even though this is supposed to be a study session today.
Gary, I, I think you're getting a little ahead. I think we have to make those decisions and discuss those pieces.
I'm, I want to know before I, I act on it and, and agree yes or no, what's being proposed? So...
I think, I think those are things we're going to work through next. Let's, let me try to break down Supervisor Stoppa's proposal and see if we can take it in logical steps. So if we hit a no, we don't have to go through the rest. Fair enough? So first, I guess the first question is Supervisor Stoppa is proposing a cannabis department to... Ben, do you want to explain what the cannabis partner, how you see a cannabis department working? And then we could all say, we agree or don't agree.
By no me, I mean, when we put forward a land use ordinance, by no means do we take the, the planning department out of it completely. So they will still have their, their part within the system. But the cannabis, as I see a cannabis department, it would be, as with my proposal here, to facilitate the background checks in a expedient manner as we decide to put forward it, put it forward, for one. Two, it would be, if I may talk a little bit how it would apply to 17.95, even though that's a different issue. It would be somewhat the, it would be where you file, file your application. And, and at that point, once you file your application, you know, if you need a grading permit or, or let's say, anything to do with the planning department, you know, when it comes to zoning or any questions that apply throughout there, they would direct you to the department that facilitates those services. But they would also be doing the inspections. And what, you know, possibly working with the other departments that, that apply. At that point, you know, it would be a transfer of, let's say, a half FTE or whatever we come up with to make this work. And then they would be going out as a group, like, let's call a white coat group, that goes out and does the inspections on those properties. And so this is, this is a centralized department that goes through and does the paperwork and the processing. And then it's where you can go to put in your permit. You get your background check. You can roll your fingers. You can go, and then they give you direction on where else you need to go for the proper grading permit, for example. And then they do the inspections throughout. This is, this is the centralized point.
So a one-stop shop?
One-stop shop for the most part. But we can't never take everything out of all the other departments and put it in there.
But you're seeing planning stills doing, Peter would still be doing land use and the same tasks.
And there, and there's some other issues that probably aren't jumping into my mind that we would need him to address throughout, throughout the process also. And I would like his experience is needed.
Let's, 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 let's call that question. A centralized cannabis department. Go, I'm sorry.
Does counsel have something to say?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to remind the board and the public, because this is a study session, this is polling to direct staff to bring items back at a future date to actually create these things. So this polling is not actually creating a department or taking action to do these things. This would be polling or directing staff to do these, to bring these things forward at a future meeting. And for purposes of 9.22, it would be directing staff to modify 9.22 to have this potential department oversee the implementation of it.
That is correct.
So let's have discussion on the first part. Supervisor Callaway has weighed in, supporting this. Anything you want to add or? Then we'll break down what that would do. Supervisor Mills?
I think the sheriff has learned some very valuable lessons over the time of the urgency ordinance and the ban. And they've offered their recommendations and I don't believe that we should be pulling them out of this discussion or pulling them out of their ability to control the outcome regarding the background checks.
We haven't gotten to the background checks.
But the answer is no.
Which is sort of, I guess, the next question under that. If we have a...
I'm a yes, sir.
Gary?
No.
All right. I've been on the record since first year that we need some, somebody accountable and in charge of this program. I actually think that that's one of the biggest problems we had for a lot of reasons in the, in the urgency ordinance is we didn't have accountability. As Dennis has pointed out, we didn't, we had trouble tracking the dollars. We had trouble coming up here and figuring out when there are problems in the system that we knew were existing. But we didn't know where they were. We didn't have anybody to sort that through. I'll just go straight out here. I'm not going to do any program that I think is doomed to fail. And, and I, and so I'm concerned, I don't want to do this cannabis thing and have it fail. We need to make sure we've got accountability. So I'm a yes to. So we're directing staff to figure out how to do a cannabis control department. Mr. CAO. So do you have any comments on this? Since it's going to probably fall on your lap?
Well, probably some questions more than comments. I'm sorry. I might ask or clarify what I think Supervisor Stoppa suggested. And I'll form them maybe in, contextualize them as tasks. So does it sound like develop a program plan including goals, strategies, and implementation framework? Develop and manage cannabis program in a manner that coordinates across key departments like planning. Develop performance measures and statistical data, including financial data on the program. Prepare and monitor contracts for services for providers, et cetera. The wonder of the internet allows me to find cannabis program managers throughout the state, both city and county positions. I just happen to read tasks from Monterey County's program manager position. And although worded differently, it sounds like that's the expectation of the program or the, the program office or manager?
Yes, sir.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I don't want to get too far out of the context of 9.22. But under that, that would be probably more of the regulatory ordinance. And I didn't touch on the backgrounds, but it sounds like those would be encapsulated in the one-stop shop where we would need a solution where the office manages the background program within the context of 9.22 as it's, as it's passed or, or modified here. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes. So we're having nine points. So we're doing, so we're talking about background checks living in the cannabis department. And now we got to figure out what that means. That make sense? How, you've got these?
It, it does, but I, I think where we need to be clear now is just where we go in terms of the ordinance, whether or not the sheriff's department or a program office is evaluating potential employees or cultivators against a criteria. The criteria has to be, has to be set and that's the very purpose for 9.22. And that's obviously going to be the guidance with which, whether it's sheriff's office or a program office would need to work on.
I want to make a point that, you know, we, this board has worked really hard to build up and put bodies in the sheriff's office. And I worry about distracting them from their core mission in order to do this work. And obviously I got a role in it, but I, I'm really concerned about that. And I'm also concerned, and one of the things I support cannabis department is people also have their other jobs. They've got the blocking and tackling going on. So if this is just an add-on, it makes it difficult. Sometimes things get done and other things don't get done. And I want to be very cautious of that. I need, you know, we just got, we just got a new beat for our patrol. I don't want your lieutenants worrying about this. And obviously when there's a big crime or disaster, all our hands are on decks. And this is going to definitely fall below the level of highest priority, I would imagine.
Since you mentioned lieutenant,
Since, since you mentioned lieutenant, Supervisor Callaway, I don't think everybody in the crowd nor publicly quite understands your sense of humor, and thankfully, I've known you long enough, and I realize that your comment related to lieutenant was more your dry sense of humor than perhaps an attack on our, our approval system or our lieutenant.
Do you think I'm getting beat up by the undersheriff?
No, not yet.
I, I merely attempting to clarify your comment and throw you a, a lifeline, because there's some people in the room that are not real happy with your comment, but I think it's, I think they believed that it was straightforward. I don't want you to think that I'm storming out of here and taking my ball and bat and going home, but I'm here to tell you, the sheriff gave me very clear direction coming here today, that if you guys started to make significant changes to this ordinance, to pull it. So therefore, I am here to pull it. I'm removing, pulling the ordinance off the agenda. It is the board's discretion, it's in your court, we will still work with you to, to finalize whatever your plans are to the extent we can. But I was given very clear direction by the sheriff, who was my boss, that if you guys started making significant changes to 9.22, to pull it, remove the sheriff's office from it, and the board can make the final determination. So, I'm not, I don't want you to think that this is, you know, us just saying we've washed our hands of it completely, but I was given very clear direction today, so I think it's time to do that.
I'll have to ask the sheriff how that's different than just washing your hands completely, but...
Well, I think we're still gonna have communications with the county administrative office, Mr. Guaramendi, as, as it relates to what you guys do, but the, the extent to our involvement. I know the sheriff has expressed that he was tired, because there were a lot of changes that took place to get to this point. There were a lot of things we wanted in, into this ordinance that was removed prior to us even getting here. Some of it went back in, not all of it. So, this has been a long road, but I don't want you to think that we're just walking out, but I do, I need to comply with my boss's direction, and he wants, he wants the sheriff's office pulled from the background. Thank you.
Do you wanna, Ms. Roll, or?
I'm gonna make a comment really quickly. I just wanted to address your question from earlier, prior to the break, as to what types of situations involved, criminal situations involved legal registered growers. And, you know, this is anecdotal information, I don't, I don't keep statistics, my system is not built up, as I said. But two of our most kind of horrendous cases occurred with legal registered growers who were victims of people from the outside. And one of them, we suspect, was associates of Tremigants. I'd heard that term used earlier by, I think, someone involved in the industry with Tremigants, who, based on their ultimate location when we found them. So this was, you know, legal registered growers trying to do the right thing, but they fell victim to others from the outside. And I'm not saying that a background check would have solved or prevented all of this, but it certainly, it may have, because it's going to send a signal as to who the county wants to include in this new system. It also may have really helped in trying to identify the individuals involved and locate witnesses, because it would have given us a lead if we had some information on the people who were involved in the little growers.
Were these Tremigants employees of the people they robbed?
We, they were from the same location as the suspects. Yes. Yes.
So they were employees of the farm that they robbed?
The Tremigants were, and the, the suspects who did this horrific crime were from the same location. So I, I'm not saying it's the Tremigants, but I'm saying as far as our investigation, the sheriff's office investigation, things would have gone a lot faster. We would have been able to, they would have been able to pursue more leads, and I think that we would have solved the crime faster had we had the information on the question. I just wanna offer that to you, that this is not about trying to prevent people from opening businesses, it's about a big picture, trying to have a more healthy industry and being able to protect, protect the people involved and the public at large. It's, it's a big picture thing. I think it's taken a while for law enforcement to get there, but the sheriff's office did, I think in good faith, put this forward in order to be a part of the process based on the lessons learned from last time. And that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you very much.
If one thing, Ms. Dieruk, is, to go with that, they did, they did give a good case of what, of other instances during the meeting of what workers had done, and the need for this, it's why, that's why, when the sheriff was originally, came in during last meeting and was going away, this is why we considered about keeping the CBCB. And I do think that some of that's very justified by what she laid out to us prior and tonight.
And it's just the real-life experience that, that we went through. And on the cannabis, establishing a separate cannabis department, this is a new, new idea that I was not aware was gonna be discussed during this study session today. That is something that we discussed way back in the day, those of us that were here during the urgency ordinance. I think it was a good idea then, it, it didn't push forward, I think there are a lot of expenses involved in that, is that, and that is another piece of the infrastructure that has to be built first before going forward. So I don't know how fast something like that can be done. You know, I know that, I believe Monterey County, the job description that you found, I think they had a very difficult time, and it took a long time for them to locate and bring on their, their person to, to lead that effort. Maybe it's different today and it won't take as long, but I think that in the big scope of things, as far as wanting to expedite this process, I understand that, but if you're gonna do it, we should do it right. And I say the "we," I mean collectively "we" as the county, 'cause that's, that's gonna affect all of us, it's gonna affect the people who are involved in the industry and the general public, who, who is not. I appreciate your leadership and your vision and your thoughtfulness in putting this forward, but I do wanna emphasize that we have real-life lessons that we should not forget about what happened the first time around, a lot of us who are here, the department heads who are here, and, and just take and pull from that information as you go forward. I do not know how long it's gonna take to build a department and, and what that's gonna look like. I think there are a lot of moving pieces, but I'm certainly at that person's disposal to discuss, and I hope they would be willing to take my input and give me an opportunity to discuss what we experienced and why we have the position that we do. Thank you.
Sheriff, I'd like a two-minute, two-minute break. Like a two-minute break to speak to counsel.
We'll take a two-minute break, where Supervisor Mills talked to counsel. Counsel, you had something you wanted to say?
Yes, I just, I, when undersheriff Macedo had made his statement, I did put my, my light on to clarify, but I do wanna clarify for procedural reasons, undersheriff Macedo had said that, that he was directed to pull the item. And I just wanted to, to clarify, anytime that an item is actually agendized, once it's agendized, the department can request that an item be pulled off of the agenda, but the board as a whole decides if the item is ultimately pulled from the agenda. I suspect that his comments were, was intended to mean, pull the sheriff's department out of the discussion of 9.22. This is a, a study session on 9.22. So, I interpreted his statement to be pulling the sheriff out of the discussion of the item, but because he did reference "pull the item," I would encourage the board to determine whether this board wants to ultimately pull the item off the agenda, which in that case, we would have to stop the discussion and stop the meeting, or continue the discussion under the presentation of a study session on 9.22. 9.22 was properly agendized, the study session was properly agendized, so for Brown Act purposes, we are still, we're still in the item that was agendized, and it is up to the board, if the board wants to pull the item as undersheriff Macedo had referenced, or if it is your interpretation of what he said, to continue with the item, not pull the item from the agenda, but to remove the sheriff's, sheriff's department from the discussion of 9.22.
Let me call the question. Do we wanna continue the discussion on 9.22? Supervisor Stoppner?
Yeah, we can continue the discussion.
Supervisor Stopper?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
Supervisor Guaramendi, yes. Good? All right, let's continue on. Ms. Roll, you had some statements you wanted to make about your, what's going on?
I wanted to make, make clear from the interactions, the, how the sheriff's been involved in the discussions that I've had about this program since I've been here. So, we all know, our sheriff is quite comfortable coming to the podium, he's articulate about his department and what he wants, and high expectations for the department. But our discussion here about a program office or how we administer a regulatory program in no way undermines his authority, and, and I'm confident in that, because I've had many meetings with him, as late as yesterday afternoon, where we've talked about, quite frankly, at his urging, prior to the last study session, when he called me and, and counsel and others prior to the study session to say they wanted out of the discussion of the employee backgrounds. That's what inspired us, having discussions about what are options on how we move forward. And all of those discussions have included him and his office, and he's been quite comfortable with me and my office in the discussion that there's good rationale to have a distinction between how a regulatory program is administered through an office versus the activity they do in monitoring illicit and illegal behavior. So, while it may appear from some of the dialogue that they've just backed out of the discussion, that's not been the case, we've had quite thorough dialogue on it, I feel comfortable speaking for our sheriff, even though he's not here, that he sees rationale for us to have a regulatory program and us manage it in a way, in the same way we would do any other regulatory program that we have within the county, and that they stay on the enforcement of illegal activity side. And I think if we, he were here, he'd nod in, in affirmation that that's been our discussion to this point, up to and including yesterday afternoon.
That's good to know. Supervisor Mills, you had a question?
No, I just was, that's, the purpose was just to get clarity. When the undersheriff made his statement, we wanted to be sure that we were in a mode to go forward and not be able to stop the discussion.
Okay, so we have an agreement, we have a majority agreement to create a cannabis department, whatever it may be. I'm, from the majority, I'm assuming this will live under the CAO? Supervisor Stoppner, your proposal?
I would assume so, for, for building, that'll give us more, more room to review it as we move forward. I think that with something like this, we need the mechanism, mechanism to be able to continually review it, so that we, you know, if there's anything going wrong, we can address it quickly.
You good with being on the seat? Okay. Let me, we're gonna have a whole lot of questions to ask about the back...
Sir?
I'm sorry, Supervisor Mills, I apologize.
No, the point is, is that when you're polling, I would appreciate the opportunity for the other two members who don't agree or haven't agreed to be able to weigh in and express our point on it.
My apologies. I assumed that because you weren't in support of the program, you weren't in support of it at all.
Doesn't, doesn't mean that we don't have things that we could say or representing our district and our, our part of the county. Thank you.
Got it. All right, so...
Well, again, we're asking you to bring something back that we're not giving, in my opinion, clear direction to. You're gonna put this department under the envelope of the CAO. We're gonna ask him to put the program together and come back at a study session and present it to us. In other words, how many employees? Where are they gonna be housed? Are you creating a department head? What the cost of that department head is? What the expertise of that department head is? What is this going to look like? And are you asking, I mean, some direction here needs to be given, I'm sure, as far as what we're looking for this department to look like? I mean, those are valid questions, I think. If we're gonna give them direction, just go out and create a department.
That's, that's a very good point, sir, and I, you know, excuse me for not bringing it up during it, but it, it should be based on the type of workload that's put forward with the fee schedule, and that would, that would address part of it, along with the comments from the different departments about, about their needs, to be able to facilitate this process going forward. This is all part of the fee schedule, and, you know, so that we can apply it to employees. So, the, a lot of the moving mechanisms that we're looking for, for the answer for the department, are within the fee schedule that the CAO has been working on. And that's the way I, I see it personally.
You, you've been working on a fee schedule?
Actually, we've, we've had quite a few meetings on a fee schedule relative to 17.95 in discussion with this board and...
That's separate from this ordinance?
It is. But we're gonna...
You're correct. And that's why that fee study is not here at this point in time, but that, yes, we have been working on it.
And then, that fee schedule, again, you've heard departments come forward saying that they would like to see a start with 25, depending on creating a whole department, if you go down the road of 25. I don't think that the fees would be astronomical just to get the department started. So, we're headed down the road of looking at changing that, what's being proposed by the departments?
I would like to, I would like to, you know, to be frank, I would like to hear from the Ag Department, Environmental Health, and Code, whether they agree with 25 as stated by the DA and SO. I would.
Also, if I may, the DA and the SO did say that, from their understanding when talking with departments, they're talking about with the people that are in the departments now. And this, I've had some conversations with different departments, that number varies from, from, from person to person, depending on who you talk to, but they, they base it off of who they have in there now. When you put forward a fee schedule, you're basing that on the workload.
Okay. I, I apologize, counsel is correct. We need to pull back to the, to the background check ordinance. We're gonna take on what we're gonna do on October 1st, and we take back, when we take a look at 1795. So let's pull this back to the background ordinance itself. We've, there seems to be an agreement that backgrounds will be done, we'll talk about what those backgrounds will consist, but they will exist under a cannabis department. Am I correct? At least, Dennis, did you have something else you wanted to add to that?
Well, I just...
Or is that statement correct?
I guess, the point is, the formation, and this might be, again, drifting away, but the formation of this department is a singular act that's going to take the expertise of the staff and everybody to pull that together. So, I don't know where 9.22 fits in the realm of a department that we don't even understand what it's gonna be, where it's gonna be, how it's gonna be funded, staffing, any piece of that. So it's like, we've got this ambiguous ball we're looking at here, and we're trying to shove this into it. I don't know how, how to make that work, from my side.
Let's, let's, if this works, we'll, we'll try to encapsulate this piece, and then we hope on October 1st, we'll see how it fits in overall piece. This is a study session to give guidance, and then I would expect staff to help figure out how that all works together. So, so work for you, counsel, but we...
Yeah, so, the study session is about 9.22, the background check ordinance. So, so far, I have received direction from the board to rework 9.22 when it comes forward for introduction, where the background check ordinance 9.22 would be implemented by a Department of Cannabis Control that would be housed under the CAO at this point. That is the way that it is written, that, that, that it will be modified to read. Between now and then, an item will come forward for the board to have a full discussion on the parameters and the overall vision of what this department looks like, and there will be a discussion and action of creating that department prior to 9.22 being adopted, because that would have to be in place in advance of adoption of 9.22. But for purposes of today, the direction that we have received is to at least draft, draft in... draft in the 9.22 overseeing of the background check ordinance to be in the administration office, who will oversee cannabis control.
Because we're staying within this, these parameters, are there specific questions that this board needs to answer in order for you to complete this writing?
Yes.
If there are, we can just hammer them out.
Sure. From my perspective, the ordinance is, is in front of you, so the direction that I have is to modify the enforcing and the implementing agency as the administrative office with cannabis control. Are there any other changes as to disqualifying convictions that the board would like to direct staff to change or, or that you would like to see continued? Or any, those were the big ones, was the, whether there were any other changes to the format of 9.22 that you would like to see changed before it is introduced?
And if I remember correctly, from when the sheriff was up here and we were pulling employees in and employees out, I assume you want to know who this is going to apply to?
Yes, employees or just the owners? Disqualifying convictions? If there would be the background check application, if there's a more robust application, or if, for instance, anybody who would do the background check could go and have their fingerprints rolled at any vendor, as long as they have the O R I, the proper O R I number for the agency who would be overseeing the background checks? And whether it would just be a disqualifying conviction, or if there is a presumption? Those were the primary issues. Do you see anything else that's off the top of my head for direction? Do you see any other, other things that you would like to get direction from the board on, Ms. Turner?
No, Supervisor Stoppa indicated doing a line-by-line analysis. I don't know if we have to do that, but if there certainly is anything else any of the board members wish to discuss about any of the ordinance, it's right in front of me. We can certainly look at it and make any adjustments or changes that the board wishes.
And I would also just clarify, this is a study session, so this is just directing staff on, on the overall policy of what you would like to see brought forward. The ultimate, the ordinance would have to come back and be introduced, and then, once it's introduced, then it would come back for adoption. So, this is not action. This is, this is direction for staff that the actual ordinance would be back in front of you at least two more times.
Okay. Let's start with the big tickets. Who is 9.22 going to apply to?
I feel 9.22 should apply, we should apply state rules, the state application process, and that it would apply to the owners. I have a caveat to that. I think the owners, I believe the owners need to have buy-in, and I believe in the card system, the C B C B card system. I'm not clear how that would, how we would fit, feed that in under the state application process that applies to the owners. I think we need to follow that. I feel that there should be a part of this that the owners will be required to have their employees, I guess, live-scanned with an O R I number, where the results come back to, because, under Sheriff Macedo pointed out, the owners can't get it. So, the application comes back to the administrative office or to our cannabis department. Because we are the ones that are gonna be in, excuse me, issuing the C B C B cards. So.
I just had a clarifying question.
Microphone.
Oh, it's on. Maybe it's not speaking loud enough. So, you're suggesting that the owners would be subject to the background check review by the county, correct?
Correct, per state, the state system.
Right, and just for a clarification, in case any board members aren't aware, an owner isn't just the owner of the business, it's anyone with management control.
Correct.
Anyone with a 20% or greater financial interest. So, it's a pretty broad category of people.
Right, I mean, I was looking at the state rules, I had them out, so, yes.
And the substantially related offense review is, is less stringent than what is proposed in 9.22. It involves presumption of disqualification only for serious felonies and serious violent felonies, but, and for a variety of civil offenses, including environmental crimes, as well as felonies involving dishonesty. And, but then you said that workers would also have their live-scan reports sent to the cannabis control department.
Yes.
So, so they would also be subject to disqualification under the same standard?
I don't know, I can't answer that. I understand what you're saying, because I see it as the cannabis department issuing the C B C B card. And so, I felt like somehow that needs to be fed into 9.22. I'm not sure how, because as I read the state law, it didn't address that.
As it's currently drafted, workers would be disqualified for, for any of the crimes that are listed and not be issued a C B C B.
That's fine.
Supervisor Mills?
I think it was very clear from the discussion with the undersheriff and the sheriff that the issuance of an O R I number is not going to give the same level of backgrounding that the sheriff's department itself would do, even if we had it done in-house through the admin office. The sheriff's department and their recommendations of disqualifications was very well thought out and very clearly stated for a given reason. They said that the employees were their number-one problem. It wasn't the owners. And so, the time that the staff took, I want to thank them for taking the time to do that, to give us this complete list, because these are the ones, these are the areas that they're finding the greatest amount of problems. So, if we're going to keep them from having to deal with these issues, then it has to be dealt with upfront. Placing it in an admin office position is not gonna really help us in solving the problems that the sheriff or the district attorney are currently facing. So, I would like to see this to include owners and employees as both having the same background check level, and I'm more concerned, again, about the employees, not the owners, in this decision, because that's what the sheriff and the D A also felt.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Employees and owners.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes, workers and, and owners. I don't agree with Marita on her state portion of it, though, adhering strictly to what state is. I think these, the ones that are in front of us in 9.22 are well thought out through experience, through the urgency ordinance, through our department heads, and the sheriff's office, and the D A. And they feel strongly about this in helping them in, in enforcing this ordinance, so.
So, there's agreement that there'll be backgrounds done on employees and owners. Marita has suggested we go by state rules for the owners, and the employees, same or, anyway, one, how do we want, are they gonna be, are we gonna be both the same, or they're two separate processes?
I would agree that they would both be the same.
Both be the same. So, everybody's.
You haven't weighed in yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I vote with the majority of the laws.
Okay, thank you.
Both be the same. So, the way the process, Ethan, can you tell us the process again? I believe there's a paper application. I mean.
Yeah, you, currently, the way it's drafted now, you submit a live-scan and a questionnaire, and the live-scan results would be a triple-I results, which would be any crime, any serious crime committed anywhere in the country would appear on a rap sheet. The sheriff would review it against the standard that is articulated in the ordinance and deny either the owner or the employees based on that standard.
Okay, that's what you want. So, the, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the.
We gotta work, we gotta work on that a little bit, because some of the language is how it was originally written, which conflicts with our prior directions, so this is part of the process. So, am I incorrect?
Well, I think, I mean, Mr. Turner just indicated how it was, how it was written.
It was previously written.
That is the way that it is in front of the board, how it is currently in draft form, but we've already received the direction to modify where it references the sheriff, that the overseeing agency, once it has an O R I through the state, would be the agency that would be implementing this ordinance and this program, the C B C B program.
I would, I would like to propose that we come up with a, I just think that, you know, if we've got to come up with a thousand employee badges, and I'm not worried about the owners, most of them have gone through this search before, gone through this before, otherwise they wouldn't be on our list. So, worried about the employees and the fact that we're gonna need, it's an agricultural product, we have people who are gonna be coming and going, we have to find some standardized way, but it also has to be flexible enough that we can provide the labor that's needed to succeed. And that's something I think we need to talk about, because, you know, so how can we do it efficiently? Does everybody need to be a saint to work in the garden? Probably not, but we also don't want to be an ax murderer. There's gotta be some way to do this quickly, and I worry about, frankly, I worry about paper applications. In many ways, they're pretty easy to make mistakes and play gotcha, and I just don't know how we can efficiently put together a program. So, I'm gonna, I would suggest we do, we gotta figure out the standards, but there's gotta be, in my opinion, a difference between owner's background and the employee's background, just because of the nature of labor to get things done. And I don't have the answers to that.
Go ahead, Marita, sorry. I have some proposals.
Under the state rules, there's an annual license application requirements. Why can we not adopt that for the owners of the business? It's the exact, it's an application, they're gonna have to fill out and apply to the state. Why can it not be the exact same for the owners of the business? Then if, if we're looking at doing something for the workers, then we could modify that. I mean, or otherwise, we're saying, okay, you fill out this paperwork for the county, then you fill out this paperwork for the state. I mean, it's pretty much the same information. Why are we making work when the rules, the state rules are already really clear about what the owners and/or managing partners and stuff that counsel talked about have to do? I don't understand why we can't do it. They talked about the offenses. Let's go with the state. Why are we, I don't know why we have to make up more rules. And then, if we want to have an application process for workers, and if I, and if I'm not reading it right, counsel, this only applies to the owners.
Right.
As I read the state rules.
Yeah, and they only require a state live-scan form, or triple-I live-scan form, which is a boilerplate form, it's two pages, and they request five pieces of information, list of convictions, dates of incarceration, probation, parole, and a detailed description of the offense, and then a statement of rehabilitation if there's any offense.
If there is any. So, I mean, I don't know why we're having to duplicate that for the owners, because they're doing it, and maybe we just, excuse me, have something similar for the workers, since we will be issuing the badges.
I just want to get clarification of what it is that you're saying, Supervisor Callaway. The county cannot obtain the state, the returns of the fingerprints that the state receives from the owners. So, are you saying that we don't do background checks on the owners and just rely on the state? Or we're saying that the disqualified, that we would still have to receive returns, that the owners would still have to do a background through the county, roll their fingers, have the returns come to the county, and that the county would then use the same disqualifying factors as the state uses for our, our purposes in doing the background checks on the owners here? Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense. I mean, for me, the caveat is why we should duplicate having a separate application when we could use the model that the state has. The O R I, if I'm using the correct term, will come back to the administrative office.
So, the issue is a lengthy background check questionnaire versus just having the form that the applicants would take to have their fingerprints rolled, that would have the county's O R I number for the county to get the returns on the background?
Yeah, and the same conditions that the state application has, because they have to apply to the state with all of these conditions. My feeling is that should be exactly the same for the county.
I see that as two issues that I would like direction from the board on. One is if you would like a more thorough questionnaire in excess of the fingerprint, the rap sheet, for lack of a better way of saying it. So, is there a lengthy questionnaire in addition to the fingerprints? And two, I lost my train of thought. Sorry.
Before we ask the question, let me go down, see what other input people have, and then I think, actually, I'm thinking that.
I remember.
At lunch, let's get together and let's write a very specific set of questions for us to go down.
Okay, the other question that I would have is the disqualifying factors, just the disqualifying factors that the state has, or the additional disqualifying factors that staff had proposed? It was those two things.
Supervisor Mills?
I think.
Before I poll on this, before you poll, or when we get?
I don't think we're gonna get very far before lunch.
We went sideways with Marita. Where are we pulling on right now?
I believe Marita was.
She was encompassing the whole thing.
But I think specifically she was saying, we go by, for owners, we go by state regs, and that should be enough. Right. I got that right, Marita?
Yes.
And the point, again, is that the sheriff was very clear on why he put it together, his department and the D A and everybody else, the way it is listed right here. So, they have their purpose and their reason for doing this, and I'm not going to be the one to surmise why they did it the way they did it. They have their reasons, and I've gotta say, if they're gonna do their job, we have to give them the tools to do their job.
Supervisor Stoppa?
I'm all right with a majority of these for the employers, owners, 20% interest owners, for the most part. I'm, we're gonna have to go through these individually, but I'm not for going all the, rolling it all the way back to state regs. Maybe I think we can roll back what the application is to the point of rolling for live-scan. But I think that the, you know, the state, the state regs are, this is much more onerous than the state regs. But going through other counties, I did a lot of research in the last four weeks, even prior to meeting with the sheriff up there. Santa Barbara County and Lake County both do background checks for the employers and employees. They hold them to the same level, although the, for the most part, there's no county or municipality within the state of California that has this list here. We're the only one that's proposing it right now. So, I think we need, we have a few things we can work on here, but I think rolling it back to state regs is, I think we need to take, we need to go through and consider the D A and the sheriff's proposals on each one of these, because they did have good reasoning behind some of them, and I do appreciate where they're coming from on them.
Okay. Supervisor Toffenelli?
Again, I'm gonna go with staff, their proposals.
Again, I'm going to go with staff, their proposals, what they have here.
I'm going to go with, I'm going to be with Supervisor Stopper on this, not just state regulations. There's other reasons to have other things in there. So we're just going to have to dig through those after lunch.
Okay, so, if I may, Chair, the first question seems to be the standard, and Marita suggested state standard, and it seems like everyone else wants to go with some iteration of what is in the ordinance. And then the other question was, did you want to have restrictions on what's on the application form? And Marita wanted it to be simple, like the state requirements, and I didn't hear that question polled.
All right. Question polled is for owners and for employees? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, if, if you're going to apply the same standard and have the same application form, that's fine with me, it's up to you. If you wanted to reduce what's on the application form to the information that's required on a state application, we can certainly do that, just if that's the will of the board.
All right, so how should I articulate that?
Well, the state requirements for, for a background review application is in California Credit Regulations Section 8102 I-13, and there is six sections. It just lists, makes you list the date of convictions, and if you're convicted, the dates of incarceration, and the dates of probation, the dates of parole, detailed description of offenses, and then a statement of rehabilitation for each conviction. If it's inapplicable, you just put N A and you move on. That's it.
Let's, let's-
Yes.
Okay. It's almost noon. I would actually like a couple minutes at lunch to sort of gather how we can wade through this new process. So I'm going to call lunch, we'll return at 1:30. Welcome back to Calvaris County Board of Supervisors meeting. We are discussing ordinance 9.22. When we broke, we were discussing, I was to go sit down and try to figure out some reasonable way to get through this. I had a good conversation with Mr. Turner about what the pertinent questions we needed to answer in order for him to complete this. We were, it actually came down pretty simple, since we've already decided things like owners and employees will be background checked. The question is, so the questions we came up with, if it's all right with the board, is, do we want to apply the same standards to both employees and the owners? And then if yes or no, there are questions that follow from that. So let me pose that question to the board. Do we want to apply the same standards to employees and owners? Ms. Callaway? It's a poll or a comment, or if you want to pass to Mr. Mills, you can do that.
I want to get a clarification. If, if I support that the owners have to be responsible for the background check, are we then establishing that this is the criteria that they have to apply?
You said, if the owners have to be responsible for the background check?
Correct.
You mean, you mean backgrounding their own employees?
Correct.
I want to just clarify, employee, employers do not have the, the ability to do the fingerprinting, because the, the results of the fingerprinting has to come back to an agency that has an O R I.
No, that I understand, but are we saying that they have to come into the sheriff's office or to, to whatever, whoever else does the live scan? Or can they use a mobile server and they have the O R I number of the county? I understand the report comes back to the county, but are we doing it, or are we saying if you hire these people, you have to make sure they are fingerprinting?
Let me, let me, maybe we're not clear on where, where we are, and we can clarify that. Is there, I was under the impression, work is our area, I was under the impression that the county will issue background checks, be responsible for them. Is that-
Yes.
Supervisor Stopper? Yeah, so the county, Marita, there's consensus, the county will issue background checks. So the question then becomes, employees and employers, same standards or not? We can pass it if you'd like.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
Yeah, the sheriff was very clear that it's the employee, employees that were more of a problem, and we know that the owners have already been background checked, so the same standard applying would create a fairness amongst everybody that's going to be involved in this project or program. So, yes, equal.
Yes, equal standards.
Yes, equal standards.
Callaway?
You can say no.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not clear what I'm really saying no to, because I think we should use the state standard, not establish a new standard, and you all support that.
That's coming, that's coming.
Your next question.
Got it, okay. So a little hinge on what the answer is to the next question.
Fair enough. All right, so the next question is-
What's your way in?
I'm with, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with the majority. The next question is, what is, what standards would we like to apply? Do we want to go with the recommendation of the D A and the S O, or do we want to create our own standards at this point? Who wants to go first?
Well, if we go with the D A and the sheriff, then we're establishing our own. I support going with the state, because they have to fill out the application and do what's required until I closed up the state law, but they have to fill out the app, and I think we should go with what the state is, not establishing new criteria.
Okay. Chair?
Yeah, I, I don't think what's before us on the ordinance that was presented today is a lot different than what the background checks were for the urgency ordinance. I think some, a few things were added, but, so it's not creating a whole new thing. It's, it's basically what was in the urgency ordinance during those background checks, and then what the, the D A and the sheriff learned, some additional things that they'd learned that they needed to do when this came around. So it's not like we haven't had this process before, Marita, and certainly the growers that passed and went through it, it's probably not going to be a problem for them, unless they've done something between now and then they got convicted of, and I haven't heard of anything. So it's not a whole new thing we've created. It's what the D A and the sheriff's office feels comfortable with, and what was in the prior urgency ordinance, and a few things they added. So I'm, I'm for what's before us, and, yeah.
Supervisor Stopper?
I'm formulating my answer because it's more encompassing than the, these in front of me. I'm thinking about wording up here. I just want to finish reading something, if Supervisor Mills would like to talk.
Supervisor Mills?
I support the staff's recommendations here, again, much what Supervisor, Supervisor Mills, sorry. I support the staff's recommendations here, and much what Supervisor Tuffinelli, and that's what I've been repeating over and over again, is that they did learn some certain things during the time of the urgency ordinance, that they have made those modifications. So the, if we're going to change what the staff is recommending here, we really need to know, why did they recommend it in the first place? What was the driver to that, that particular section? So I support staff's recommendation until I hear otherwise.
Supervisor Stopper?
Look, may I, may I read a part of this out loud?
Absolutely.
E, E, "In determining whether an applicant is eligible for a C B C B under this chapter, the following convictions within a ten-year period prior to submission of the C B C B application are presumed to be substantially related to the qualifications, functions, or duties of an applicant." Now, with that read, my understanding of that is, I mean, obviously, these felony convictions, it doesn't matter if he kills someone, it doesn't matter if there's marijuana involved, you know, he shouldn't be. But it gives, it gives the opportunity to go through this, because some, some of these ones that I think might worry, for instance, Supervisor Callaway, such as like someone being disqualified because they sat in at a sit-in in U C Davis one time, and, you know, subsequently got convicted of a crime for, for such, you know, isn't really, is a bit onerous for, for being, so this gives the determining officer, let's say, in this situation, the opportunity to vet through these and see if the convictions are, are, if the, these, these are within the, the, as, as E states, you know, related to the qualifications, functions, or duties of an applicant. Am I correct in reading that? So, so at that point, you know, they can make a dutiful decision, you know, as whether they, they do apply or not, you know? We don't need to penalize someone for speaking up for themselves and being in a U C Davis, you know, sit-in, you know? That's exercising somewhat, I believe you're right, to freedom of expression or speech. But with that said, I am good with the majority of these things with that, with that said. Although I do see what, what was added in here? Because there's-
Mr. Stopper, I can add one point to the, how the analysis works. You were talking about person being arrested at a sit-in, that would probably be under Penal Code 148.
Yes.
And under that section, there, it goes down, there's a list of subsections, and one of them is, you know, trying to pull a gun away from a cop.
Right, and that would be disqualifying in my eyes.
Right, right, but it falls under the same section. And then, but if you look down at number, at subsection F, the, the person making the decision has to look at the nature and severity of the acts and violations, under consideration as grounds of denial, the time that has elapsed, any evidence of rehabilitation. So the way it's written now, you have to consider mitigating factors, and you would look at a, at a conviction under 148, find out whether it was a sit-in at U C Davis, or whether it was a person trying to wrestle a firearm away from a cop. And, and, and then you would not deny the person who was in the sit-in, you would deny the person who was trying to wrestle a firearm away from a cop.
That's the conversation I had with the sheriff in the past, and that's why I would consider leaving it in for the very reason that we don't need, we, we should, I mean, I would think wrestling a firearm from a cop would be a more, yeah, a little worse than hugging a tree, but that's the way the law's written. And so at that point, you know, being able to go through and make a proper judgment based on this is sufficient for me. Right now, I can handle this with that being part of this ordinance.
Counsel, you have a question? Okay, so we've got three. I, I agree. I think the D A and the S O spent a lot of time on this. They're integral partners in the security of our community. I, I think that, you know, operationally, I think taking it out of their office, but using their guidance, so I will support as it stands as well.
And I would like to add too, is that it is within their purview to determine level of threat, and to what Supervisor Stopper had said, let them make that decision as to what that threat level is, and whether it, it applies here or not. They, they know what they have to live with, so if we give them that tool and let them make that determination, that's their professional guidance that we're looking at here, and I think we always have to defer to that. We're not the professionals in this particular arena.
Okay, so what we've done today is, we've, we've changed up who the final authority is going to be on by creating this cannabis office. Mr. Hall, I would hope that you would be able to come back on the first and tell us what this actually means and what it would look like, and as we look at operationalizing things, so we can figure out how we administer it. I don't think, are there other questions regarding 922 that we need to talk about?
Yeah, there were two other things that I would like clear direction on from the board, and one is, in the current 9.22, we have, there's, there's the rolling your fingerprints for the DOJ background check versus a questionnaire, a separate questionnaire. Obviously, we would have to have an application for issuing the C B C B, but is the desire of the board to have a lengthy, a lengthy questionnaire to accompany the application for further background, a desire of the board?
We already polled on that, ma'am.
You did?
At the beginning. We said we don't want the lengthy questionnaire, and we would stick with something that would be like the application that was put in for the state.
Okay, great.
So that's been answered, ma'am.
Thank you. The other is clarification that the fingerprints can be conducted anywhere, not just here at the county, through the sheriff's office. So I wanted clarification from the board, because the way that it is written, it specifies that an application for our county C B C B shall complete a standardized criminal background check application form provided by the sheriff and submit to fingerprinting at the sheriff's office. So I want to clarify whether both owners and employees would be able to seek their fingerprints at any live scan facility, not just here at the sheriff's office.
So, go ahead.
For instance, there are the, the mobile and-
If I may speak to it before we poll? We, we discussed this up at the sheriff's office, and it doesn't matter where you get your fingerprints rolled, they're getting the same information back to where the O R I R or code is. So would that, I would be a yes, anywhere.
Anywhere? Supervisor Tuffinelli?
Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
Don't let you want to ponder.
Yes, I don't need to ponder.
Supervisor Mills?
I only refer to what the sheriff might have as a concern as, as to maintaining that chain of custody. Remember, he talked about that in that conversation, so.
Mr. Hall, you had conversations with sheriffs about this?
Rick and I discussed this yesterday, and he's still in the same place that we were in our, our meeting. The, the custody, for lack of a better term, for the fingerprints exists in the return going to the system that we have access to, and that's our O R I number. So in our discussions yesterday, he still confirmed that particularly if it's in a regular regulatory ordinance and being administered outside his office, that he supported it, the fingerprints being rolled at any, any live, appropriate live scan vendor, if, if that information helps.
So, yes, so he's feeling that he can live with an outside agency handling that?
Yes, sir.
Well, if he says yes, then, and I, I have to trust your word on that, that I would have to then agree.
We saw the sheriff at lunch, and he's confirmed he's been watching this and following it along, so I'm sure he may phone in if I said anything that he, he would contradict.
Is he taking Xantac right now?
Of course.
Supervisor Tuffinelli?
I support what the sheriff.
Okay, so Megan, anywhere?
You too.
As well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clark. So any other questions that we need, and can we see this, when will we be able to see this, again, for the first reading?
I know that it was requested that we have the first reading of 9.22 on October 1st, and we will endeavor to have that prepared and agendized for October 1st.
I have one clarification question. Does this apply to just the cultivators or dispensary owners? Does this apply to just the cultivators or dispensary owners?
9.22 currently applies to all participating people within the commercial cannabis industry. So all owners of any commercial, any permitted commercial operation and any employees of those operations.
I'm not sure that I support that concept when I look at the dispensary owner in my district, in that he's been background checked three times, and now we're going to say you have to do it again and again, and where does it stop as the owner?
I just want to clarify, this is the ordinance for purposes of the background check. Certainly, if the board wished to draft in exceptions or what have you to 17.95 or to an updated dispensary ordinance for existing dispensary owners, that's in the board's prerogative. That would be something that would be done in 1791 when that comes to the board, from my perspective.
I do have a question. Why did we pick 20% vested in a business? Is that because of what the state says? And we could be more strict on that, could we not? The reason I say that is if everybody knows that 20% is the threshold, it would be very simple for somebody to avoid this whole issue by just being 19% or less, if you're in LLC or whatever. Are we opening a potential Pandora's Box somewhere in the future by not being a little bit more restrictive? That isn't a question to counsel. I'm looking at you, but it's not a question to counsel. I just thought the board might want to explore what that is.
Is there any interest in exploring that threshold?
Personally, no, because if we make it 10%, then someone might go for 9%.
Supervisor Tuffinelli?
No.
Supervisor Germini?
No.
Anything else? Ladies and gentlemen? Supervisor Tuffinelli?
Yeah, before we adjourn, I'd like to poll the board on a different issue.
Okay. So we all agree on the night board to study session? Okay.
Yeah, given the fact that there's a lot of upset individuals in my district and Jack's district, and I'm getting bombarded with emails and phone calls concerning the housing projects here in San Andreas and the ones in West Point, I would like to poll the board and see if we can bring these items back and have a discussion about what we can do about the situation, and maybe having them move to different areas, or just open that discussion back up and have that conversation.
Yes.
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 Can we see it on our next, our next regular agenda is the 8th, right? October, oh, we don't have time. Please work with Kristen and figure out how we can get this back for a broader discussion.
Thank you, thank you very much.
There's no other business? We stand adjourned.